I'd like to declare the extraordinary meeting of Liverpool City Council for the 24th of July 2024 officially open. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with Council's Code of Meeting Practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. To start today's proceedings, I would like to invite Reverend Bruce Hemmings from Liverpool Presbyterian Church to read the acknowledgement of country and importantly, the prayer and affirmation of council, followed by the National Anthem. Could I invite everyone to please stand?
Before I begin, I just want to thank council for your hospitality and just assure you that there are many people within this council area who appreciate the work that you do and we love you and we want you to know that you are valued and yeah, we really do support you and we continue to pray for you and we pray all of God's blessings upon each and every one of you. And I just want you to know that and it's hard when you feel that you are under attack. And so we do support you and love and care for you. So thank you. We acknowledge that God, having created the world and everything that's in it, with respect, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabragall Clan of the Darug Nation, and I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter what their background, race or creed. We affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, for our nation's future, for the mayor, the councillors and the staff at council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Let us pray. Our great God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, Father, we want to thank you for the quality of life and the freedom that we enjoy in Australia. We are part of a world that has so much trauma and we pray for those who are suffering in the Middle East, especially Israel and Palestine, and those in the Ukraine. Father, we pray for peace in those lands and other nations that are facing real conflict at this time. Father, we thank you for those who've paid for our freedom in the past and those who currently serve in our army, navy and air force. Help us to be a multi-ethnic, healthy community and have a unified culture and as a nation to know peace and unity. Help us to enjoy and reflect on your great love for us and we thank you that you care for us and you bless us so well. Father, we thank you for our emergency services, our paid staff and volunteers. We thank you for, we have so much in this country and we thank you for the Christian heritage that has made this nation strong. We pray, Father, that those who do find a haven in this country would find a real home, wherever they come from, and that they would find healing and restoration and security and hope for the future. We pray for our Prime Minister, Anthony Albanese, an opposition leader, Peter Dutton. We pray for our Premier, Chris Minns, an opposition leader, Mark Speakman, and all who serve in our federal and state governments. We pray for those who serve with them. We also pray that we would have stable government for years to come. Father, we thank you for this city of Liverpool. We thank you for the long heritage our city has enjoyed and we thank you that people choose to live here from all around the world and make this their home. Father, we pray that you would bless every man, woman and child who is part of this city and especially those who are employed by council and work in the many services that our council offers. We pray for our council, our mayor, Ned Manon, all of our councillors, the hard-working men and women who provide everything that we need within this council area. We pray for the development into the future and, Father, we pray that you would bless this community. Father, we thank you for our past, trust your wisdom and guidance for our present and commit ourselves to you for the future in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have councillors attending remotely. I think councillor, I think we have a request from councillor Caliendo to request to attend remotely. All those in favour, sorry, seconded councillor Green, all those in favour, against, a declar carried. And just before we go, I know he's not here, but I just would like to put on the record, if we can please reflect our thanks to Reverend Bruce Hemmings for his prayer for all of us here at council and for his commitment to Liverpool City Council. If we can have our appreciation reflected in the minutes, that'd be greatly appreciated. And obviously, myself personally as well. We have an apology from councillor Carnib. Happy to accept it, seconded. Councillor Rhodes, all those in favour, against, a declar carried. Condolence motions. It's with deep sadness that I impart with you the loss of our friend, Uncle Harry Callaghan, who passed away on the 1st of July 2024. Uncle Harry Callaghan was first and foremost a proud Ngadi man from Kemsie who generously gave of himself while serving as a community manager at the Geningera Local Aboriginal Land Council. Uncle Harry found his true place and home within the hearts and companions of his extended Geningera family, who will miss him dearly. He warmed them with his daily friendly yemas, encouraged them with his reassuring message sticks, gave them dignity and understanding with his cultural mentoring, and strengthened them with his dedication to community engagement and devout support of their programmes. This is sorry business for us, his family and the community. This way of expressing our grief goes to the very heart of what it means to be part of our community. Thank you, Uncle Harry, and farewell. And if I can move that we acknowledge Uncle Harry with a minute of silence. All those in favour, against, a declar carried. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next is our confirmation of minutes, and I'll do this in two parts. For the minutes held on 24th of June 2024, move deputy mayor, that they be accepted, seconded councillor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, a declar carried. And next is the minutes for the 22nd of July 2024. I just want to, no, sorry, councillor Caliendo, we had a declaration of interest for you, but I don't have a form actually filled out.
Was this for the extraordinary meeting or for the meeting on the 24th of July?
For the extraordinary meeting held on Monday, the 22nd of July.
I sent that through to executive services staff on Monday. So it should have been, and I believe the CEO noted that it was received.
Oh, the actual form? Yep, thank you, okay, wonderful, just checking. All right, wonderful, all right, well, I'll put forward the minutes. All those in favour, that the minutes be accepted. Seconded deputy mayor, any discussion, put it, all those in favour, against, a declar carried. Are there any declarations of interest? Yes, councillor Hall?
Oh, that's better. Plan O3, non-percurnary, less than significant, I will remain in the chambers.
Sorry, can you, Plan 03, what's the item number? Oh, sorry, what's the title of it?
Warwick Farm.
Yep, do we have a form? Just want to make sure, just to make sure that you follow the process, councillor. You need to read out what your interest is, the nature of the interest and why you think it's non-percurnary.
I've said that it's non-percurnary, I don't believe it's significant, and it's due to family members living in the area.
Yep.
I think they're the requirements of the declaration, which I'm happy to fill out.
Yeah, can we just make sure it's filled out, please, to make sure? Can I get one as well, if you don't mind?
I have, I'd like to declare an interest, Mr Mayor.
Yes?
It's in Conf 11, appointment of the Audit Risk and Improvement Committee Chair. The interest is non-percurnary, less than significant, as I am the councillor representative on that committee. My action will be that I will leave the room regardless. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you. Sorry, we've got a few addendums, I just want to make sure that... Sorry, everyone, bear with me for a moment. Do we have details of the company directors for Conf 12? Yep, cool, all right, that's fine. So I'd like to declare a non-percurnary, less than significant interest on item Conf 12. The matter, the matter, the nature of interest is I know of the company, one of the companies that has tendered. It's non-percurnary, less than significant, however, I will be leaving the chambers. Are there any other further declarations? No, okay. We have no speakers today. I understand someone has a flat tyre, couldn't join us, so aware if they do come, I'm happy to, I'm happy to give them an opportunity in the future. Yes, councillor?
If there are no speakers in today's meeting, I've got an urgent motion.
What is your urgency motion, councillor?
The urgent motion, Mr Mayor, is that we've just received conflicting, very confidential information about the legalities of some matters that concern as to if councillors are in some form of a caretaker mode at the moment, pending the current Office of Local Government investigation. So what I am seeking then, Mr Mayor, is confirmation from the council that we are indeed able to address the very serious matters in this council agenda without fear of being incorrect legally.
So is that a question?
The motion is, please advise assurances that councillors are legally able to make the very important decisions in today's agenda.
I think that's just a question, councillor, I don't know if...
No, please advise, well, I'm looking for assurance from council now that we can indeed speak about all these urgent matters that are on the agenda. We've received conflicting information, Mr Mayor, so we do need...
Yeah, I'm just trying to ascertain how that's a motion rather than a question.
The motion is...
No, no, I...
Please provide.
About what would you like, please provide? Would you like a...
That council, please provide assurances.
Would you like a recess and getting ready to advise?
If that's what it's going to take you to give us the assurance, whatever it takes, Mr Mayor, but we need the assurance that legally we are entitled to perform our duty on today's agenda. That we're legal.
Yeah, let me just get some advice for a moment. Councillor Haddad?
Well, councillor, are you taking about the caretakers?
Sheriff, given the urgent motion, please, you decide.
Just trying to work...
The council, the still a council, there is no caretaker period, so which has been any decision we do, so it is, it's absolutely lawful because the council is not in caretaker mode right now. So I don't believe this is the right motion we have to move now, thank you.
I'm seeking...
So I just want to, you're seeking legal advice?
Yes.
All right, now, I know in seeking legal advice and asking if your, if your motion is to seek legal advice, I wouldn't want to speak on his behalf, but I know he's very prudent, but giving legal advice on the run is not something, I'm not sure that could actually happen, however, I'm happy to refer to the general, to the general councillor, the CEO, if I can. I'm deliberating whether it's urgent or not. I think the question is urgent and can be answered, but whether it's a motion or not is another story, but I just want to, but I need to ascertain once again whether she wants a written legal advice. That's what I'm trying to work out.
I think I would like written legal advice, Mr Mayor. This is a serious matter. We've received conflicting information from council, so please assure us that we are not doing anything that is legally incorrect. Give us the right to participate in this agenda. It's not a silly question.
No, no, not a problem with the question, not at all, right? And we received that notice on Thursday, today is being Wednesday, we've now had six days to ascertain it. Just one moment, councillor, right? There is no issues with the question, it's just a matter in which you would like your response is what we need to do, because if it's deemed urgent, the motion gets passed, then what do we do while we get that legal advice?
The matter is urgent, Mr Mayor, because this is a question mark as to whether we can legally perform our duties as councillors on today's agenda. I don't know. Why don't we ring the Office of Local Government and ask them?
Councillor, there is, from the, from the advice and what I've seen here... Accordingly, if the council, the legal advice is accordingly, if the council is not suspended on 24th of July, it seems to me that is, that is able to continue to make legally valid decisions on the dates that are binding on council. That council can continue to make any such decision until, until any suspension takes effect, noting, as I have done above, that I understand the council intends to seek conjunctive relief preventing the minister from suspending the council. So anyway, I'll, I'll refer to the CEO and to the staff, because what, that isn't writing, but I'll, I'll refer to it and then we'll get to your, I'll give you my...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll refer the question or concerns to general counsel.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for recognising that this isn't always as easy as I make it look, not, not to be flippant. So I have made available to all councillors written legal advice, which I sought on instructions from the acting CEO, because there was an item on the agenda that I thought was particularly affected by the issuing of the interim report. And that advice does not say that it would be unlawful to make a decision on that item of business. What it says is that council recommends that council does not do so for three reasons. The first is that we're on notice that there's an intention to suspend the council. And this term has no legal status, but council calls it a kind of pseudo-caretaker mode. That there is no legal term pseudo-caretaker mode, he's simply using that label to refer to the fact that we are on notice of a risk of being suspended. That's the first point raised. The second point raised is that there are matters in the interim report which specifically bear upon that item of business. And the third reason is that we've been advised via Civic Risk Mutual that we haven't had a response from our insurer. And in those circumstances, council recommends that that item be deferred, which is the advice I put in front of you today. I think what flows from all of that is that firstly, it's not unlawful. Secondly, there's a prudence question around, particularly in relation to that point, it could arise on other reports as to whether it's prudent to make a decision in the circumstances. But that is a matter for you and not for me to dictate to you, and you are not prevented in law, if that makes sense.
Can I speak? I guess that the issue is clarification on the decisions that we make as a whole in the context of the advice on that particular matter. If we can't make a decision on that matter, it's like getting clarification that it is, that we are promptly constituted and it is lawful for us to make decisions on other items on the agenda.
I would just reiterate, councillor, I think it's a very fair question. I would reiterate that I don't think there's a legal barrier. I do think that it's a matter that councillors may well raise on a particular item, knowing what they know is in the interim report. So if a councillor said, well, I think this one ought to not be decided today, that'd be a matter for this council to determine.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the general counsel, thank you, has clarified what I was going to ask, so we have some, I've read through all of the advice and it does discuss general items first and then a particular item that we have advice on. And thank you for obtaining that advice. I'm comfortable to go ahead with that written advice that we have pertaining generally and to that item in particular.
So councillor Rhodes, so just mindful that now that we, we have written advice, we have had the general counsel answer our questions, the ability to go in, get another set of written advice is not, I believe, possible to happen. It can happen, but you won't get that. We're not going to be, I have no intention of pausing this meeting to do so. So I guess I'm, if you, I think it'd be good to note if we put on the minutes that the discussion and the questions and the answers that have been received from councillors to the general counsel, noting the written advice that has been provided.
I'd be happy with that, Mr Mayor. It had to be questioned. Do we have a second for that motion?
Well, it's not really, it's not really a motion as such, the action is just, that's why I was saying it's a question.
Well, the, the advice, we're taking the advice of the council, of the council, that's it.
If the urgency motion were to say that council receive a note, the advice provided to councillors and provided by the general counsel during the meeting, during the start of the meeting regarding council's ability as a, as a governing body to make decisions in light of the threat of suspension. Would you be happy with...
Very happy with that, Mr Mayor.
So I'm happy to accept that and this urgency motion, being that we accept what's happened from councillor Rhodes. Yep, seconded councillor Green. Okay.
Get clarification.
Nothing wrong with asking questions. What do they say about asking questions, councillor Green?
Questions are good.
Questions are good. Great, wonderful, okay, I'll put that, I'll put that urgency motion. All those in favour, against, a declar carried. Would you like some help with wording? Sorry. Council receives a note, the advice in the general counsel, the advice in the general counsel in this meeting and the written advice provided to councillors with regards to council's governing bodies' ability to make decisions in light of the threat of suspension from the minister. That's, I know, technically we can vote on that again, but I think it's the same, everyone happy being the same? Happy, happy with it? Cool, brilliant, lovely, great. We'll now move into mayoral minutes, and I'm very pleased to bring to your attention the exceptional commitment and dedication of Ellen Russell to our community and to Liverpool City Council. Ellen's longstanding connection with our area, coupled with her unwavering attendance and participation in council meetings exemplify her deep-rooted interest and support for our city. Ellen Russell grew up in Miller, laying the foundation for her enduring affinity with our local community. Despite currently residing in Wollongong, Ellen travels consistently to attend council meetings in Liverpool, a testament to her ongoing dedication and commitment. And I think she makes more council, makes more council meetings than councillors. Remarkably, Ellen has never missed a council meeting, underscoring her profound interests and... and personal investment in the decisions and developments that shape our city. Her consistent presence serves as inspiration to all who witness her steadfast involvement. In recognition of Ellen Russell's exceptional commitment and to honour her significant contributions to Liverpool City Council, I propose that a special chair be dedicated, I propose that a special chair be dedicated in our council chambers in her name. This chair will serve as a lasting tribute to Ellen's unwavering dedication and as a symbol of appreciation for her support for our community. I kindly request council's endorsement of this proposal, acknowledging Ellen's remarkable contributions and ensuring her legacy is recognised and celebrated within our council chambers. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Now, if you can excuse me for a moment?
Mr Mayor, I've got an urgency motion.
Yes councillor, what's your urgency motion?
Regarding Meals on Wheels Liverpool.
Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, no, I'd like to declare an interest if someone's going to talk about Meals on Wheels.
Let's see what the motion is and then we'll, you can take the opportunity.
It's up on the screen now. Meals on Wheels Liverpool has serviced our community for 60 years, providing meals and comfort to those in need. The staff and volunteers also prepare, package and deliver to other areas in Sydney for contrib, for distribution, thus their service is essential to so many. Meals on Wheels Liverpool is in desperate need of a new combi oven to be able to continue to provide for their clients, and so I move that council provide up to $32,000 from general funds to City of Liverpool's Meals on Wheels, including upon receipt of a detailed quote for the purchase and installation of a combi oven and the associated ancillary equipment.
Thank you councillor, why, why is it urgent?
This is urgent because Meals on Wheels will not be able to continue their essential service to the community on a local and regional level without this equipment.
Yeah, I'm happy to accept it as an, as an urgency motion based upon that.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Mr Mayor, I would like to declare a non-significant, less than pecuniary interest in the matter because of its association with Meals on Wheels and a family member of mine does some occasional work for somebody involved with Meals on Wheels, however, and not in that capacity, but I will declare an interest and I'll fill a form out while I leave the chamber.
No, what did you say, non-pecuniary, let's see, great, if you can just get that form over to us. So councillor, just need to identify a funding source, can you use that? Oh, general funds, are you there? Oh, sorry, thank you, my apologies councillor. Yeah, wonderful. Yeah.
Question, Mr Mayor?
Yes councillor.
Did, did Meals on Wheels put in for a grant for this?
So can we get a second for the motion first?
Yeah, no worries, okay, so we'll get to that in a moment. Second for the motion, councillor Moon. Great. Yeah, did you want to speak for your motion first and then I'll get to you?
I think it speaks for itself. The thing is failures to, failures of aging equipment recently means this needs to be action ASAP, or it will leave community members vulnerable and without secure food.
Yep, fair enough, yep, great. Councillor Rhodes, the question was, have they applied for grants? I'll refer to the CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll refer to director of community and lifestyle.
Thank you, through the CEO, Meals on Wheels have put applications in the past, but not for this particular matter is my understanding.
And I guess another question is that, you know, is there, is there even a grant that qualifies in this, for this amount?
That's correct, there's no, unless it would be a matching grant of 15,000 that council could give with their matching component from Meals on Wheels. To provide broader context, Meals on Wheels have a nominal fee of $1 for their rental agreement, and that's why the upkeep of the facility itself and the amenities is the responsibility of the organisation.
Councillor Green?
I did attend the AGM last year, and this issue was brought up, and I did encourage them to apply, and I understand from the secretary, as long, as recent as several weeks ago at a community event, I asked about, followed up about the, the grant, and I was advised that the grant was unsuccessful, that had been made to council.
Just refer to the director through the CEO?
Just refer back to the director, community and lifestyle.
Thank you, through the CEO, no, no grant is received or rejected, to our understanding, that's the, that's what's on record for us. To also provide some clarity, Meals on Wheels were given, donated through our charity, our mayor charity board some years ago for a van of 50K as well.
Mr Mayor, just to clarify then, is it possible for, you know, this is a very fundamental thing, I know the great work that they do, and I'd hate to think that people aren't going to be given meals because they haven't got the necessary equipment. Is there, I'm still not clear if there is an avenue for them to apply for a grant apart from the matching grants programme, because I take it that they wouldn't have 15 odd thousand dollars to be able to contribute. But there is a method, I believe, that that contribution can be made up in other ways like acts that they do for council or, or such, is, is that correct?
Through the CEO, not under our provision unless there was a resolution of council. The only other grant that I could think of would be a club grant, so councillor Green, that could have been what they did apply for and were unsuccessful. Yeah, it does go through council portal, but it's, it's not my understanding that they, that it went through. Correct, yes.
Certainly, if there is a need for this sort of funding in Liverpool, we should have a, a system whereby they can access grant funding, because that's basically what it is, they obviously do a very, very important service here in Liverpool.
Well councillor, there's an amazing system, and it's called democracy, and it's called, called elected representatives that represent the community. So when there is a challenge, when something happens, councillors can advocate on behalf of the community and together as a collective can make a decision to help or not help. And thankfully, yeah, thank you, and thankfully, we have a council.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, I'm willing to participate in the democracy of this council.
Yeah.
But on another matter, Mr Mayor, we have to be financially prudent, we do have grants processes, we do have money sitting in there, that the money could come from the grants funding rather than from general funding of council, that was my objective, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, great, and, and, and I once again, you make some very valid points there councillor, and our 400 plus million budget this year is thankfully in a $2 million surplus, thanks to the turnaround last couple of.
And how much money do we have in the grants programme at the moment, Mr Mayor?
The grants, what is this, what are we now, in July, it's our first meeting?
That's right.
The report is in there, I don't want to turn off my head, but I imagine it's full, subject to what we described, what we removed, used today. And the question is, I think the bigger question is, so we have, we have for this year, but do we, did we have any carryover for last year? I don't remember exactly.
Through the CEO, no, it was, if you can recall from the last, the June council meeting, we resolved, and I think we were left with $1 in surplus. And if we resolve today councillors, there's 406,000 in the grants remaining.
Mr Mayor, I wonder if I could make an amendment to the motion, just an additional, so that in future we have this covered, that council advise or provide a report on possibilities of making it possible for such important organisations as this to be able to apply for some sort of grant funding in future.
Councillor, that probably is, so you're saying make a, a potential new category to the grants and donations policy?
Absolutely.
Pardon? Oh, that wouldn't hap, oh yeah, look, that's, now, correct me if I'm wrong, we've just, haven't we just gone through a full process of reviewing that policy? When, when, do you remember when we did that, it was?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll revert to the director of community and lifestyles as to the timing of the review of the policy. Just for one clarification, which was mentioned prior, matching does not mean equally matching.
That's right.
So, thank you, through the CEO, in terms of the grants changes, we've done a number of those throughout this term, and we, I won't be able to do that on the fly, we'd have to put that out for public exhibition etcetera, but that, yes, that can be done. And to provide us some further clarity, I've just got some further advice from the team, it looks like Meals on Wheels received, and this was provided to the councillors last week, in my absence, a grant from Club Liverpool for 31,000 for nutrition for our vulnerable communities. So through the clubs programme, they have been successful in also getting that, some funding which is communicated, thank you.
So look councillor, councillor, I don't see that the, amending the urgency motion was to say review the policy in itself is urgent, I think that's a, that's something separate particularly in this motion. I think if I understand councillor Goodman intent with this motion, you have Meals on Wheels who are servicing over a thousand meals a week, who have an urgent requirement that if that machine, which is at its last legs, is about to break down any minute now and become no longer operable, what happens to those people, the most vulnerable people in our community who are requiring, relying on that service? So I think it's about helping a community organisation that is in, in need of support. Your motion is about saying, well, great, how do we create a better, a mechanism for this, for the future, by all means, let's do it. But I think what they call it, that's a, that is itself is not urgent, so I can't accept that as part of the urgency motion, if you want to move it as something separate or bring it up in the governance committee, so be it. So I'll. Microphone please councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, happy to remove it on the basis that it's not urgent, I will bring it up in a future meeting, so, because I think that it's important that we be able to.
Sorry, you can bring it up in com zero one, Grants and Donations Community Sponsorship Report, that's a, that's a time you want to.
We'll bring it up in that, that agenda in this meeting. Can I just have confirmation again through the CEO? Was that correct, that they already received a grant of $30,000? For something else? So they never put in a grant to council for this? No?
There is no grant, that's what, we've just got clarity, that there is no grant they can put for this.
So they put in a grant for the clubs grants, but it wasn't for this? For nutrition?
Thank you everyone, through the chair please, and you with your microphones.
Thank you.
Lovely. All right, I think we've, we've had plenty of discussion, thank you councillor Goodman for putting it forward and hopefully councillors can support this.
Can we just delete number two there?
Yeah, please delete number two. Great, would you like to write a reply? Great, okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, councillor Caliendo, are you for or against? I can't call it unanimous if I have no confirmation. Can you hear us? Can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us? There we go.
Sorry, just, the reception dropped out, I'm for.
You're voting for? Okay, great, wonderful, okay, I declare the motion unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda, and I'll get to, there's another one mayoral minute, but I think it's more suitable if I bring it a bit later on, is plan, we'll get to the agenda, plan zero one, draft compliance and enforcement policy, page 44, tab one with the recommendation on page 45. Oh, sorry, somebody bring the deputy mayor back in? The room was awfully quiet.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, what's that shiny thing?
One second, sorry, what was that, the?
The shiny thing, it keeps hitting my eye.
Shiny thing?
Around your neck.
Of this?
Yes.
Oh, I'm glad you asked councillor Goodman. This is the 2024 Premiers Award, and the winner is Liverpool City Council. Yeah, indeed, wow. And for the category, and it's very shiny, so it's a bit hard to read, for Business Excellence Local Government Medal, from the New South Wales Government, that's their logo there, which was handed to me by the treasurer with the director and the council staff at the, I think it was March 31st, or right, March?
March 13, 2024.
All right, so only, what's that, March 3, what are we now, four months ago? Only four months ago, the Liverpool Council achieved Business Excellence from the local government, indeed. Imagine if we weren't dysfunctional, how many, how many more of these we would have?
I wonder if we'll have to give it back, Mr Mayor?
I don't think so, we achieved it, you know what I mean? Good luck, exactly, good luck. Yeah, and it's not coming off, I can tell you that for sure. So a lot of people ask me, is this because of the Olympics, just timing is great, but, you know, Business Excellence in local government, don't know how that, just very confused at the moment myself, but anyway. All right, thank you.
On that note, perhaps, perhaps it's useful to acknowledge the work of the director and the directorate that was awarded the award and the programme that was the recipient of the award, perhaps you'd like to speak about that?
Oh, deputy mayor?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, if I can suggest that we do have a place for councillor presentations at the end, if the councillor would like to speak a little bit longer.
We, 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 we did do a councillor Caliendo, we did do, we did do a mayoral minute after, after it, so it has been noted in the records, but the medal that's. So it has been noted in the records, but the medal itself hasn't been really shown, but a hundred and ten percent, actually two hundred percent, the amazing work-
That's right. Well, considering we were discussing it, I thought it was an appropriate time to bring it up. But as a point of order, perhaps we'd like to go back into the agenda.
As a, yeah, okay, well, not a point of order, councillor Goodman just had, it was something affecting his vision because of the shine of the medal. So I had to just clarify with him, so, but I'm sorry, councillor Goodman, I won't be, I won't be taking it off. But on your point, councillor, I'm happy to acknowledge the award-winning service delivery from Liverpool City Council staff, the CEO, the relevant director, the relevant manager, and the amazing team who work in rain, who work in the cold, who work long hours to deliver excellence in local government for our community. And I think they're delivering over one million people into our city centre at night time. It's, yeah. But I should, I should warn everybody that I did get a few people posting about it, congratulating me myself personally. So I think if anybody wants to report that as a code of conduct, or to the investigators, please do so. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, would that have been the previous CEO, John Ojaka, that was also to be congratulated on that?
Probably not all ten of them, probably not all, probably not all ten CEOs.
Mr. Mayor, I just wonder, the acknowledgement of some of those stuff in the recent report as well.
We'll get, we'll, we'll leave that for another time, councillor, but yes. Plan zero one, Draft Compliance and Enforcement Policy, page forty one, sorry, page forty four, tab one, recommendation on page forty five.
Happy to move that way.
Moved, Deputy Mayor? Seconded, councillor Moon. Just one, would you like to speak for your motion, councillor, Deputy Mayor?
I had a question first.
Yeah, but if you wanna, the call is yours, as the mover.
Yeah, thank you. I'm very happy with the report that's been put before us by staff. Thank you very much. I note that we've been working on this for a long time, so thank you very much for that. And it brings, brings our policies up to date with what it needs to be. And this has been to exhibition already, so I'm happy to endorse it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, councillor Hall. Questions?
Oh, just a comment in here on page forty six. The policy was placed on public exhibition. And we did get some comments back from the residents, and it basically says, "Council received one submission containing recommendations around inclusion of the word discretion used throughout the policy. Concerns raised have been addressed in the post-exhibition report attached. My concern is also with the word discretion. Think we need to be careful how that is applied. The rules and the regulations should apply before discretion. Otherwise, there is a possibility of, what would you say? It, it could depend on the person, and it leaves us open to criticism. So I'd like to see that certainly implement the policy, run it, but I think it should be reviewed to see what the impact of that is."
So you move, um-
I'm not sure when this policy is due for review. I think it's every two years, could be more. But I'm just suggesting that we shouldn't let it go. If there are issues, we need to look at them. So if we want to add that to the, the motion.
So that it gets reviewed. I just, I'm pretty sure that in the policy itself, it speaks to how often it should be renewed. I think that's a standard thing for all policies, but it's just worth having a quick, where is it, at the end? Review date. It says, so at the end, it has on last page, the review date, the policy must be reviewed every two years or more frequent, or more frequently depending on its category, or if legislative or policy changes occur. So, happy with that? Can councillor Rhodes turn off your mic, please?
No, I want to-
Yeah, when I call you, because councillor Hall's still speaking, so, yeah. Happy with it? Okay, great. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm, I'm happy with the policy in principle. I know that we will have problems with the word discretion. We also do have problems with the order of importance of how long it's going to take to have your problems answered by council according to risk. And I agree with that, but already there was one complaint sent through to me, and they were told that it wouldn't be answered for such and such a time because there was no risk. And I'm sure the CEO knows about this. Unfortunately, there was a horse put down on the property because of certain conditions that were happening on that property. So council needs to be vigilant about that discretion to make sure there are other forms of risks. Certainly, as I said in the, in the email that I, I sent to, you, you've got to be careful about risks. There's greater risks, or as much risks, that are not to human life, and they also have been considered, and it was missed in this, this complaint that was sent through to council. So I, I just really emphasise the importance of really having prudent reporting on what the actual situation is and acknowledge that there are other forms of risks other than safety to human life. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any further discussion? I wanna, I'd like to speak for the motion, particularly want to thank the staff who worked very diligently on this. It did take a while, you know, thank, but we are now here, so I really want to appreciate the wonderful effort that they have put into this policy. We are faced with significant challenges in our community. One of them being streets that were approved being too narrow, and I'll thank the councillors here. I think it was particular councillor Harling and councillor Rhodes who pushed for wider streets in the new release areas. That is good for those areas, but the reality is, how do we retrofit a solution? And while some of the streets are being, having parking bays, it doesn't change the fact that garbage trucks are, are having, are finding it very difficult to get through our streets, in some cases not being able to get through, as well as ambulance and other emergency vehicles. This is a common sense policy that will make a significant difference to our community. I know, remember standing at a polling booth in Cecil Hills where a gentleman raised to me a very unfortunate incident that happened where I, I think she was, someone's family member had passed away who was quite young, and people had come, as is customary, to the people's house for a wake. And then when they left that wake, they were all issued with fines. People have never been there before. They weren't aware of the policy. They didn't have a warning because they're outside the area, but they all were hit with significant fines. And I'm glad that here we are. Sir, if you're listening, we, we won't see you at the polling booth, apparently, in next month, in a couple of months' time, but we finally changed this policy and dealt with it, as I'm sure you all have received many, many other complaints about this. So well done to the staff and everyone involved, and it's good that common sense has finally prevailed. And this is enough from my point of view, taken ten years, couldn't do it last time I was mayor, but it's glad that this one is done this time, so, thank you. I strongly recommend for all of you to support the motion. Is there any more speakers? Write a reply, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can just echo what you said, I think that's really important, and that after ten long, hard years, here we are, something for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it unanimous. I don't see councillor Caliander anymore. Is she off the, got left the meeting? Councillor Caliander has left, left the building. Okay. Next item is Plan zero two, Street Naming in Kasula, page seventy three, tab two, with the recommendation on page seventy three. Do we have a move, councillor Harle? Seconded, councillor Green. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is Plan zero three, Warwick Farm Precinct Issues and Options Paper, page seventy seven, tab three, with the recommendation on page, page seventy eight.
Move it as, as the recommendation.
One second, one second, hold your horses.
Like to move it as, like to move it as per the book.
Moved, councillor Goodman. Do you have a second, there? Councillor Amun? Great.
I have a foreshadowed motion then, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm just thinking what they want.
Oh, sorry. All good, sorry.
Option two, option two, just, just before you move your four, oh, sorry.
Option two is conduct further investigations to re-sign the precinct to an industrial innovation precinct.
Okay. Councillor Rhodes, what is your foreshadowed motion? Microphone, please.
We'll put it up onto the screen now, but it does need explanation. Okay, you can read the motion there. The first point, the factual number of residential properties already built above the flood level. In the report, it is carefully explained that there, there was a visual report. Sorry, is, am I interrupting something?
No, I have a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councillor, what's your point of order?
I just, you know, to, to use the words, pending factual reports being presented to council would indicate to me that there is some kind of accusation that the reports that have been presented to council are not factual.
Yep, no.
If I can explain then, Mr. Mayor?
I'm, I'm happy to give you a second to explain, but I do agree with the deputy mayor that that should be withdrawn, but I'm happy to give you an opportunity to express why you think that word should be in there.
The report, Mr. Mayor, on the actual number of residences that are already built above the flood level, well, Mr. Mayor, I believe that that is inaccurate. And I think that the inaccuracy is because they, it is explained in the report that they drove around and looked for buildings that looked higher, that looked like they were higher than the flood report. That's hardly accurate reporting to councillors, and it is open then to it not being factual. And in this case, there are particular buildings that are, that have been missed.
I, I have to, I understand your point. I have to rule in favour of the deputy mayor, because you can say it in different ways, but by saying factual reports, you'd, I would even say a more detailed report.
Happy to say, change it to accurate, accurate?
Or, once again, it's the same imputation on staff, which I won't accept. If you want to say a more detailed report?
A detailed report.
All right.
Well, we've got a detailed report already.
A more detailed, a more detailed report. Well, let's see.
It's the methodology, Mr. Mayor.
Well, then you'd say, with applying a different methodology.
Okay, pending a different report.
To cast aspersions that what's put in front of us from the staff is not factual, does have considerations, that if you believe that's the case, then there's, you may want to look at what is available mechanisms are to you, but I would strongly, I, I do need to rule that out. So if you want to say, I'm happy to accept a, a different methodology, that-
No, okay, Mr. Mayor, defer this matter pending a more detailed report being presented to councillors that include information about. Number one, a change in methodology to determine the number of residential properties already built above the flood level. Number two, I've forgotten what we said.
I think you have to remove the word from point, the word factual.
Yes, a different, change the methodology, that's right, that's now-
We'll take out point three now, it's become point one.
Yes, take out point, no.
The wording for point two has now been changed into point, into a more acceptable, point one. So that all those words there can go.
Yeah, councillor Green, if you can just, if you can just let me do it, please.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind if I do it, so-
Number two.
Just one sec, one sec. So change in methodology, determine the number of properties already built above the flood level. Explanation discrepancy, okay, yep, so that rep, thank you, councillor Green, yes, that's now removed, and that's
Okay, there-
Not repetitive, and then all good.
Okay, the explanation to the discrepancy in the flood evacuation report that explains how Shrivna Street has emergency access to the railway bridge, that other parts of the same precinct claim that they do not. If they know the area accurately, Shrivna Street, you have to go through the whole of the precedent to get to the railway bridge.
Can we just concentrate on putting the motion before we discuss the motion?
Yep, yep. So it's there, okay, we got it. Do you have a second or for your motion?
I'm happy to second.
Microphone, councillor Green, seconded, yep.
So the, the issues that we need greater explanation are itemised in the, in the motion.
Councillor, councillor, we have to go, that's the foreshadowed motion, I think everyone's seen, can we just scroll down so everyone has seen it? You can read those out, but that's it, and we cannot, we should not be discussing that first, because we need to do with a substantive motion, which is the first one, as moved, I think it's by councillor Goodman. Well, third one, yeah, I'm happy to, just- Yep, one second. So can you just put your microphone on, councillor Rhodes, please? Turn off your microphone. Councillor, councillor Hadid, can you just put your microphone in?
That councillor proceed with option one, just leave it as is. What sort of report you, when you use papers in the morning herald, it's very simple, leave it as is, that's it. Yeah.
Can, can I just get clarification? When you say councillor Hadid?
Sorry, ma'am.
No, 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 I want to ask you a question. You're, you're, what you're saying is option one?
Yeah.
Keep, when you say keep it the way it is?
Yes.
As in make no changes to the precinct?
Nothing at all at this stage.
Okay, option one is saying proceed with the existing precinct plan.
No, 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 no. Okay, so just forget about the option one, and just leave it as is.
Yeah, so option three, retain the existing zoning and development standards. Yep, that's the intent there.
That's it.
I'm sure that's, that motion captures that intent, and, then, item captures that intent of the motion. Okay, do you have a second or for your motion? Councillor?
I shouldn't really, I shouldn't really be.
Sorry, can you put your microphone on, please? Councillor Hadid, turn yours off.
I saw it.
Yeah, councillor Hall, can you put your microphone on, please? You were saying?
I would prefer someone else seconded.
Yeah, you're saying you shouldn't be-
I've declared a non-percoony interest
Yep.
in the area.
And less insignificant.
Less insignificant, but even so, I would prefer someone else seconded.
But you're staying in the room and still voting on it? There's no, because there's no, there's no difference between seconding and voting on it or not voting on it. All right, that's fine. So do we have a second or for the motion?
If no one wants to second it, I'll second it.
Okay, seconded councillor Harle. Sorry. Sorry, councillor, did you say it's your granddaughter who owns property in the area? Owns or just rents there? Sorry, can you put your microphone on, just so it's seen.
She lives there?
Yep.
This, this, this issue has been debated before.
Yeah.
And I have actually had to explain my reasons. And my reasons are that I'm a North Ward councillor. Those people living in that area lobbied me on their behalf to see, to, to ensure that they got what they wanted in that area. And you remember, I've been advocating for those residents in that area. My issue is, yes, I do have relatives that are living there, but I have relatives living all over Liverpool. So, you know, the issue becomes a bit mute. The point is, I support what those residents want to do, and so I tend to speak on their behalf. And if that includes my granddaughter, well, obviously it does.
Yeah, but ju- just so I can get clarification, um, so your granddaughter lives in that area?
Yes.
Where we're looking at.
Yes.
Uh, rezoning or changing land use, right? And does she own property there, or is it, is she owner or renter?
She's, she's the part owner of the property.
Okay, so she has a, a pecuniary interest.
She has a pecuniary interest, yes.
Okay, great, I just think that it's for, councillor, I think it's very important to put that on the pecuniary interest form, so it's clear that I, my granddaughter lives in that area, she's an owner of a property and she has a pecuniary interest in that, yeah.
Mr Mayor, just a procedural question, did I get the opportunity to speak for my foreshadowed motion?
The motion, the mover of the original motion has not had an opportunity to speak for his motion.
So I will be given the opportunity to speak for my foreshadowed motion.
The, once the, uh, first, we have to debate the original motion first before we go into the next one.
Thank you.
But you can.
While you're debating and voting on it as well.
Yep, so if the, uh, if the, if the move, the original motion is successful, then we'll deal with your one. Um, yes, yours is a foreshadowed, as well as councillor Hadid's a foreshadowed, so we'll go through them. But if the first one passes, then we won't go to the other ones. So you can maybe structure your argument, a bit of speaking, if you, or however you want to speak for the next motion, for the original motion. All right, um, councillor Goodman, would you like to speak for your motion?
I've actually caught up on the briefing session, I've read, uh, many of the reports that were done over this issue. And I actually support the staff, that, uh, the staff's decision. And especially Luke for all his hard work on this, uh, on this matter.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Um, I'd like to speak for the motion, Mr Mayor, if that's okay with the seconder, thank you. Um, look, we've, we've had briefing session after briefing session on this matter, we've had report after report, and the people need some certainty. Um, this has been going for multiple council periods, council terms. Um, and, you know, there are challenges in that precinct, and I think that they have been reported to us so many times that we could not carry all of those reports in here with us, so. Um, I thank the staff for their continued way forward, trying to find something that works in a difficult area, and I commend them for their recommendation, and I support the original motion, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harl.
Yes. Look, I don't intend to speak against the motion as such, but just something we need to bear, bear in mind. That precinct, the discussions around that precinct go back at least fifteen years, if not more, and probably thirty years if we really go back to the previous councils. We've had numerous, uh, public, uh, what would you call them, uh, residents, uh, submissions. We've had people come to council and, and, and had these, uh, public, uh, submissions from those people, including, there must have been at least fifty, if not more, residents came to here. We had a Warwick Farm Steering Committee going back years where we spoke about all those issues. The people themselves are not sure of what should happen in that area. The problem is it's flood prone, the problem also is that Governor Macquarie Drive is one of the most busiest drives roads that we have in our area. If you make that, or if you increase that area to, uh, what is it, uh, uh, industrial, you're going to worsen the traffic effects in that area. It's already bad, you're going to make it worse. You may recall, some years ago, we actually had a development application to make that current vacant block of land on the, facing the highway, that was going to be high-rise residential. And if you had looked at all of those plans, we actually voted on that. And unfortunately it was defeat, defeated, but it was a recommendation to council to build those units. I think there were some, initially some nine hundred, and that was then reduced to six hundred. That went to council and it was recommended by council at the time that we do that. Now we're looking at turning that into industrial, that's completely the opposite of what we had intended to do then. So there are issues there, we really need to look at that very carefully as to what to do. It's not something you're going to settle in the next ten years or so, that's going to take a lot longer than that. So the impact of this decision, I don't think will do very much for that area. But to turn it into industrial, I think that's the wrong thing to do. You've got the Warwick Farm Railway Station there, that is a public transport hub, if you like, which means if you do have residential high-rise on that block of land and surrounding it, also along the railway line, that means you're going to have a lot less traffic than you would if you turned that into an industrial area. Yep, and I think what happens too, we're talking about that making the area around the hospital a technology park. The residents that would live in those units at that, on that vacant block of land, which was originally proposed, they would have easy walking distance to the hospital and any technology park that you want to do there. There is a lot of vacant, not vacant land, there is a lot of land there, uh, that is currently being land banked for whatever future wa- is to happen there. So I think overall, we really need to reevaluate what happens there. I don't think you should be just saying, let's turn it into industrial and wait and see what happens. That's the impact of turning that into industrial is going to be far worse than having units or even leaving the, the place as is. Remember, there are impacts such as the odour zone from the sewage treatment plant, and I understand that is able to be solved. I believe, Mr Mayor, you, you told some information about that many moons ago, so it's not that, that is a restricting factor. That can actually be mitigated and the problem goes away. So if you did want to turn that into residential, you could actually do that. You know, when you think about it, more point which we're proposing to turn into residential is across the other side of the river. So, anyway, I, as far as I'm concerned, I think we should be looking at this in greater detail than just really nearly approving this.
Sorry, ca- can I just get clarification councillor Harl, so. You're saying, are you, were you saying that we should be putting high-density residential in that area?
Yes, yes.
I, I believe we should, the original plan was when you came, came into Liverpool on the left-hand side before the railway station, there were going to be high-rise buildings there. Along the lines of what you now have on Hoxton Park, the Sky House, whatever you want to call that, those two talk, we were going to have that there. We saw the plans, they were presented to council, and that would have put Liverpool on the map. When you come into Liverpool, that would have looked extremely good compared to what you've got there now. You know, coming into Liverpool, that's probably our worst gateway coming into Liverpool, we could do a lot better than what we've got there.
So just now, can I just ask through the CEO? Now, to go high-rise, is that, which option is that in the, um, in the report? Is that option, option one, proceed with the existing precinct plan, can we just get some clarification on it?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll just revert that question to the acting or the substitute director planning and compliance, Mark Hannah.
Uh, thank you, yeah, through the CEO, that, that's correct, the precinct, the option one would include the high-density component. And that, that's, that's the issue that we've had with the department of planning, um, that, that's a difficult option to proceed.
Thank you, so just, can I, yes.
Yeah, yeah, well, look, uh, it's not only like, uh, a high residential, can we put some sort of like restaurant? You know, as a small shop part of it, like, like the idea is to create something similar to Ed Square, you know what I mean?
So.
Because you've got, you've got the hotel in the area. You, you've got the hotel in the area, you have everything, you know what I mean? You're not going to foot like, uh, industrial, truck in and out, truck in and out, the panel bit or whatever, but, but it's a disaster, it's awful.
So councillor Hadid and councillor Harl, you've moved and seconded option three, which is keep the existing one, but you're both speaking for option one. Is that, am I correct in understanding? Put your microphone, please, microphone.
If, if option one, it's all about like putting high-rise in, some restaurant shops, like, I, I go for it. I change it and go for option one.
Okay, so councillor, so if you could just move, you could have changed the three to one, but anyway, all right. So councillor Harl. There we go. So you're moving, uh, councillor, are you happy to second that? Sorry, microphone, please, please, turn your.
I'm happy to second whatever is in the best interest of the community. And I think you'll find option one and option three both contain high-rise, if I'm correct.
Uh, can we get clarification, so option, can, can, can I just refer the CEO just for a moment? Could we, this, in everyone's point and councillor Harl's point, I know from two thousand and eight, when we first got elected together, what's that, twelve, the old, what's that, just the three of us were here since that, that long, um, me with my holiday in between. We've been dealing with Warwick Farm, investigation after investigation after investigation. And it sounds like this is a, this is D-Day for Warwick Farm. So therefore, because I don't really think that anyone should be dealing with this any further, because it's been, we can't just study another site for another fifteen years. Um, and I'm not even, what you said about, I didn't want to think about that, it's been going for thirty years.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, that's not correct.
What's that?
Because the last motion that was moved on this particular item was waiting for the safe evacuation reports from council, for the flooding safe evacuation. That was in two thousand and, um.
But what's the point of order?
Well, the point of order is that what you're saying isn't correct, we've been through all these, but it was left for council to come back with a report.
What I'm saying is not factual.
No.
My understanding is that report you're referring to, uh, has been considered as part of the recommendations from staff.
This is, this is the report back, so.
Yes, I don't see, but I'm saying, I don't, I don't see it as a point of order because.
Well, you can't say that we've had too many, uh, talks about this.
If you want to go for another five years, no problems, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, I, I will, I'll withdraw my comments. So can I please, considering the importance of this matter, refer through the CEO to the staff? If we can have a bit of a summary of what option one, option two and option three is, because there seems to be, we've obviously had a lot on in the last few days, I, I, I respect that everyone, it'd probably be good to get a bit more detailed breakdown of the three options.
Uh, through the CEO, I will defer to the coordinator strategic planning.
Thank you, through the chair. Uh, option one is what went to council in November twenty twenty-one, which is all the master planning, precinct planning work that we had done, that got deferred in twenty twenty-one primarily because of the flood evacuation report that was not yet finalized at the time. Uh, difficult to summarize it in a short period of time, however, attachment one uh, of this council report is the master plan report or structure plan report itself. It was for a mix of uses. Uh, the rezoning was to rezone it to B four mixed use, which is now known as MU one, R four high density, and then some public recreation uses where open space, as well as flood storage was required, so that's option one. Option two is for us to revisit the vision for the precinct and look at an industrial direction potentially, and I'll stress, that's not for us to go and do all of the work in totality. It's for us to work out what that project would involve from a timing and cost perspective, and then we would come back to council before we start on, uh, on that work in earnest. Option three is to retain the existing zoning and development standards and not make any changes, and just a reminder, it's primarily zoned R two low-density residential with an additional permitted use to permit the horse training and, and sort of, uh, health-type facilities for the horses. And there's a small pocket of R three, uh, right alongside the train station currently, that is low to mid-rise walk-up flats.
If I could just clarify, uh, through the CEO, so, sorry, look, if you can, the, um, option one, which is proceed with the precinct plan, November twenty twenty-one, for a, a mix of uses. The, in simple terms, that would take it from a eight-point-five, whatever, you know, low-rise residential double-story into something that is more like Ed, Ed Square, which is what the council, which is a high-rise, I think it was three to one or whatever it is, so. Effectively, you're going from houses to units, and if I recall correctly, we're talking about roughly three thousand, was it three thousand units in, in the area?
Yeah, correct, between three and four thousand, and a scale roughly equivalent to Ed, Ed Square.
Yeah, and what roughly height limit, what does that look like, ten stories, eight story, I'm sorry, another, uh.
No much, eight stories, six stories, twelve stories, ten stories, and then fifteen right near the, uh, the train station, but a, a maximum of fifteen approximately down to about six stories on the peripheries of where development could occur.
All right, great, so on option one, it's, if everyone is clear, it's going high-rise from two-story buildings to up to fifteen-story buildings, going up to three to four thousand, uh, units. Um, and rezoning that area from a low-rise residential to a area that has a mix of uses, which would be a mixed-use precinct like Ed Square, is everyone clear on option one?
And I'm sorry, I was stepped out for a moment, but, sorry, Luke, I did step out for a minute. Um, but this is what came to us at the briefing session as being very difficult to deliver, correct?
Correct, yeah, councillor, councillor staff have worked really hard on it, it's been through a few iterations, there's been two community consultation.
I'm sorry.
Processes, yes, very difficult from a flooding, odor buffer, uh, feasibility, infrastructure costs, very, very difficult, yes.
Can, can I just ask before, I just want to make everyone crystal clear of what the options are, because, uh, we had councils who were, uh, to councillor, councillor Rhodes's point, they were, uh, talking for a motion but not the right item, so we have that as option number one, and we come back for questions in a moment. And that option number one for the high-rise change is moved by councillor Hadid and seconded by councillor Harl, so, yep, great. Option number two, which is moved by, which is the motion that has been put forward by councillor Goodman uh, and seconded by councillor Amun, is a conduct further investigations to rezone the precinct to an industrial slash innovation, innovation precinct. Sorry, through the CEO, could we get some brief summary of what that looks like?
Through the CEO, uh, we don't really know yet. What we are seeking is to pivot away from a mix of uses, primarily pivoting away from residential uses in that area. Uh, from a flood evacuation perspective, noting, I'm no expert in this field, however, the experts advise that flood evacuation is somewhat simpler for non-residential development, because for residential development, your house is by far the most valuable asset that you own, and it's very difficult to control people's behavior in a flood event, and there's huge risk involved with residential development in the flood plain. It is somewhat simplified with non-residential development. Uh, there's great opportunities potentially in terms of the innovation precinct that already exists, as well as the industrial development that already exists, both to the south and to the north of the Racing Precinct area. However, we would need to investigate this further, and that's what we're seeking in the recommendation, that we would go away, do further investigation, look at how long that would take, roughly what that would cost, and then we would bring that back to council for an informed decision.
And that was originally, and that was originally, I think, proposed, was it the, by the Greater Sydney Commission, if you can?
Yeah, so the Greater Sydney Commission, as it was known at the time, developed the Liverpool Collaboration Area or Place Strategy. Uh, their vision as part of that broad strategy for this particular area was for non-residential development and instead an innovation industrial type precinct.
And option three, I just want to get, just want to get the options and we'll go to questions.
No, 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 I'm, I'm going to option two right now.
Are you changing to option two?
Right now, option two, according to our friend here, he said he doesn't know.
One sec, point of order.
He doesn't know, so this is why option two should be removed from here, he doesn't know anything about it.
Councillor, there's been a point of order, what's your count? Councillor, there's been a point of order, what's your count?
Mr Mayor, control the meeting, are we going through your process that you set?
That's right, we're getting there.
Thank you.
Free speech, I'm, I'm happy for people to express a few words, there's nothing wrong with that, and I respect my elders and.
Well, can I have a free speech now, Mr Mayor?
Uh, in one moment, you will be able to, right? And I'll respond, I'll refer to, respond to what councillor Hadid said. Uh, councillor Hadid, uh, I understand the point that you made, but that's what this is saying endorses further investigation, right? Now, to an industrial slash innovation precinct, now, if we, for my technical term, an innovation precinct is not a planning, it's not a planning, not debating, it's clarifying. Uh, i- is not a planning term as such, there's nothing, can I get some clarification on that?
Yeah, through the CEO, uh, it is a vague term typically used in stra- strategic documents and policies. It's a meaningful term, however, it's not a land use zone per se.
So can, can, to make it easier, can we, what would that industrial slash innovation precinct zoning in a map more than likely be? Or will it be, can you be definitive on what it would be?
Again, if you, I suppose, what, what's happening here is option two is a departure from clear council decisions. Yep. So the reason why I say we don't know yet is because we don't go and do a bunch of work in direct contravention to a council-endorsed decision. What we're seeking here is a new direction and to allow us to go and do those investigations. In terms of what an innovation precinct could look like, it could be an industrial zoning, it could be a employment zoning. There's also special use zonings which are rarely used, however, can be used for bespoke planning outcomes if supported by more detailed planning controls.
So could we then put that on there, which says, um, which says potential industrial zoning? You didn't say mix you said employment zoning? And third one?
Through, through the CEO, so we could, we could say this could contain zones such as industrial, employment or special use zones. They're three of the likely zones that could be chosen. Uh, and importantly, those zones do not permit residential, which is the key change in vision that we are seeking through recommendation, option two.
Yep, so to clarify councillor Hadid, that the staff do know what that looks like, and that gives us an idea, but effectively it's a non-residential use in the precinct.
My point is, we got a three option, option one, proceed with the existing. Option three, retain the existing. Option two, conduct a further investigation to rezone precinct, industrial. We're going all around the world. So how you can, he came back to me with three options, an option to go for further investigation. And in fact, I've got two, it says proceed or retain, as simple as that. So that's why I'm asking is to remove option two. I don't need further investigation, we don't need waste of time, we don't need a few more years to contact investigation and come back to the council. I want to see Warwick Farm, a copy of Ed, Ed Square, as simple as that. You've got a great hotel over there, a great race course over there, you've got a, a tiny station over there. We're like, it's, it's, it's perfect, it's perfect, you go for it, as simple as that.
Thank you councillor, and you, uh, you can actually remove it, because it's a recommendation, it's, it's from the CEO. You can vote against it, by all means. Is the, oh, can I, is the mover and seconder happy with that changing, the addition of those words to the end of that point two? Yes, mover, happy with it? Seconder, happy? Happy, okay, great councillor Harald.
Question.
Yes. Can you put your microphone on first, one second? The, the, councillor Harald turned it off. The foreshadowed motion will be dealt with, should the original motion not succeed.
You've gone through the motions, we've had discussions here, discussions from yourself. You know, we should be just, uh, moving forward in a precise and democratic manner.
All due respect councillor, the councillors were moved a motion, but were talking about something different. Um, and we just needed to clarify that, there's nothing, you know, that happens, we have a lot of information in front of us. It's not a, uh, it's not an indication on, or discussing disparage on anyone, far from it. I'm guilty of that myself at times. Um, uh, but yeah, so we're clarifying it. So if you can allow me to continue chairing the meeting, we will get to this. This is a, something that council, as councillor Harald has said, we have been dealing with for years, and it's important that people are making decisions crystal clear with an understanding with our experts, uh, who are here today. Councillor Harald.
Right, there is a further issue that, that, um, we need to look at. And, and something that we don't know the answer to. For instance, that is a racing precinct, we know that, there's a horse racing track there. We do not know how that is going to be used in the future. Will it increase, will it decrease? Particularly with Rosehill being, uh, the possibility of Rosehill being shut down and that being built into a housing precinct. That then means there will be a substantial number of trainers currently at Rosehill that will move to Warwick Farm. So do we accommodate them, or do those trainers go on, on course? In other words, they don't use the area. That's a big question mark. This is why I'm saying maybe we shouldn't be looking at this and making a decision to say, yes, we'll turn it into housing, or no, we'll turn it into a, an industrial area, when we don't know the effect of Rosehill in this area. That's a big.
I think that's what councillor Rhodes' motion is about.
I have a question, please.
Yes, councillor Rhodes.
Exactly, Mr Mayor, okay, I'll have a few questions then, if that's permissible. So my questions are that, um, previously in discussions about all of this matter, there was a very important thing that happened. Uh, there were allegations made about council in regards to one governor Macquarie Drive development. Now, council never received a report on what the scope of that investigation was, and we never received anything more than a one-line uh, answer as to the conclusion of the investigation, which was nothing to look at here. What we need to see before we can make any decisions about this particular racing precinct is a full report, a full report where we see what the scope was, because we don't know. And, am I interrupting something again?
Listen to councillor Rhodes and not have aside discussions, you can do that outside if you like.
So we need to see what was the scope of that report, and we need to see the full report that was brought back to council, that this council has never seen. We have to see that before we can make any of these decisions. Um, there was the, uh, the, the, the collection of the funds for the payment for the bypass in this precinct. What's happened to those funds? We need to know what, we need to know this information, Mr Mayor. Are those funds still available? And where are they? Yeah, well.
Sorry, what was that councillor Green, sorry?
I just went, was the, is the bypass, is the bypass still on the, the table to allow, you know, in terms of supporting the function of that particular precinct?
I thank councillor Green, but I was still talking, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, that's my fault, my fault.
Yes, no, no, I accept her apology, but I was pulled up because somebody else was, was talking when I felt, anyway. An explanation and minutes of the meetings where the decision-making on what areas of Liverpool were to be collaborative areas of Liverpool, and who were the stakeholders included in that meeting? We need to know, uh, were the landlords at that stakeholders' meeting? Were they considered stakeholders at that meeting? And for heaven's sakes, can we correct the name? It is the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct, and we call it everything from Mundane Street to all sorts of different names. It is the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct, and that was moved in a motion a long time ago. They were my questions, Mr Mayor, okay? I will wait to speak to my foreshadowed motion.
Great. Can we put them, sorry. I'm just saying councillor, uh, if, I don't know if you've asked those questions to staff before?
Mr Mayor, I can understand your concern. We've got one, two, three, four councillors currently on council. To them, this is all new, this is all new, they don't know, you don't know. And that's the point. So if anything that should come out of this is that we get back this information so that you can be better educated about the precinct.
When, when do you want it back, by, by Monday? Because after that, it's going to the administrator.
Oh, is it, Mr Mayor?
That's what you guys are asking for, isn't it?
No, we're not asking for anything, Mr Mayor, we're waiting on a decision for that.
Councillor Har, I think councillor Harald was asking for that yesterday.
Is this a diversion from my speaking?
No, I'm just saying, you, you're saying you want this information back.
Yes, we need this information back before anyone on council can make a decision on this matter. That is the correct thing to do.
The appointed administrator.
Two questions, Mr Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, the first is, is the same question that you just asked that I don't think has been answered. And if I can ask through you to councillor Rhodes, whether you've asked for these reports before, because it's, we've had lots of, I'm just asking, because we've had lots and lots of this to the table, and I haven't, I haven't noted that being asked. And my second question, I'll get them all out before anyone else starts talking, is that, um, to be very clear through you to the CEO, uh, probably to Luke, that, uh, option two is to do further investigation, correct?
Yes. Yes, sorry councillor, all due respect.
Beg your pardon, I'm clarifying.
Right, yes, so what he said was that council has made a resolution to investigate a mix of uses, and that has been done. The stu-, they're now asking for a change in policy position to investigate what he was described regarding an industrial, employment or special precinct.
I'm sorry, one fifth, oh no, sorry.
Yeah, and just, if I can say that, and the reason why that was not thoroughly investigated, and they're asking permission to do that, because they, they don't investigate, they don't investigate things outside of council policy, but now they're asking to do that. Does that clarify for you, Deputy Mayor?
There's one more, sorry, one more further question that when it says receive the report, um, it like into, i- if we ask for this, um, further investigation, a report will come back at a later date. That does not nullify all of the other reports and options that have been brought to council before, is that correct?
Sorry, I, can you ask it again, sorry?
So if we do receive this further, if we vote on option two and receive further information after the studies are done about how to deliver that, and that comes back to council, that does not nullify, by collecting more information in option two does not nullify the other options, if you like, that are on the table today. It doesn't cancel out, because we're asking for more information about an innovation precinct, does not cancel out the other options that are there.
I'll put it to the CEO, I can put an opinion on it, but I'll put it to the CEO.
Thank you, I understand the question, I'll just revert again to the substitute director planning and compliance.
Through the CEO, that is correct, yeah, that would negate it, it, it'd ground truth whether that option two is viable. We'd bring that back to council for endorsement.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, uh, councillors, uh.
Sorry.
Councillor Harald.
If, if it comes back and you're looking at option two, and things change in the future, in other words, the, 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 the big impact here is Rosehill Racecourse. And Rosehill Racecourse, the impact of that will have a significant impact on Warwick Farm. So really, you can't, in all good conscience, do anything until you know more about that. So I would simply suggest if option two allows us to wait and look at what happens in future, to me, that's the more prudent thing to do. Uh, if, you know, i- if the government decides to go ahead with Rosehill, then, as I say, uh, there will be major impact.
Thank you councillors. The, um, councillor Harald, the ATC, uh, has expressed to myself, as myself, um, and I think the council staff as part of their master plan, or excuse me if they have it or not, but the, about, um, having the trainers from Rosehill moved on course. So I think that's what their, that's what their intention was.
Is that the trainers from Rosehill, Mr Mayor, or the trainers from Warwick Farm?
At least from Rosehill, but if not, I think the whole, ideally everyone is what their, what their intention is, but that's what they've been intending on for a very, very long time. But having said that, I think, uh, councillors, i- if there's one thing to note in this, is that flooding is impacting planning decisions. The application of, uh, the PMF flood level and flood evacuation were things that were, are being applied, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's applied much more stringently now versus the five hundred mill above the one and one hundred flood level. Um, when you look at the challenges that precincts in Liverpool have had, uh, whether it's the, uh, the Marina precinct, um, and others, uh, if you were to apply those same standards, then maybe there is no point, uh, even discussing Rosehill, because Rosehill will not be moving. They, their, their flooding constraints are more challenging than what these areas are. Right, it's a pretty, pretty, so I don't know how the state government is gonna under, is gonna, uh, uh, how the state government is gonna overrule, um, and apply double standard than what they're applying, applying here. Because if not, we would have had significantly more housing located on a train station, um, taking off the pressure off of, uh, uh, house prices and rental prices in the area, but I don't, and it could have helped to make our area even better. So anyone, I think.
I haven't spoken for my foreshadowed motion, Mr Mayor.
We can't speak for your, your foreshadowed motion, only you get to speak for it when it gets,
Okay.
if the motion laps, uh, doesn't succeed. Councillor Hadid. Microphone, please.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, I went through my record two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and sixteen, I moved a motion, I moved a motion to have a synthetic track in Liverpool.
Synthetic track?
Yep, in Liverpool. It was on the eighth of April two thousand and sixteen. And I'm retiring from politics, maybe this is the last meeting for me, and we haven't got it.
Synthetic?
Two thousand and sixteen.
Alright, where, where?
Eighth of April, it's on record.
Is it a synthetic horse track?
Yes.
Horse track?
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't got it.
Not the athletics one, I thought it was the athletics.
Every year we talk about it, we follow it, and we're still waiting, and I'm retiring from politics. Mr Mayor, you and I.
Sorry councillor.
Elected, you and I elected on council two thousand and eight.
There's a point of order, councillor Hadid. It's off, it's off. Point of order councillor, point of order councillor, councillor, councillor Chris. Thank you councillor, councillor Rhodes has a point of order. Microphone, please councillor. Thank you. Alright, thank you, the community thanks you for your passion councillor Hadid. Can, before you go, can we, can we, can we, can we vote on the motion? I think we've discussed it plenty, everyone's had ample opportunity now. Hey. Alright, okay, thank you. Thank you councillor Hadid. Alright. Would you like to speak, we've had plenty of debate, councillor, uh, Goodman? The, um, would you like to, would you like your right of reply, thank you Deputy Mayor? Microphone, please. Go for it. Oh, hold on.
I think we've, uh, we've had enough talking with and against.
Done. Okay, we will now put the motion moved by councillor Goodman, seconded by councillor Amun, um, which is about option two, potential industrial zoning and employment zoning. Um, should it not succeed, we will then deal with the foreshadowed motions. All those, and this is a planning matter, so we can please have everyone's recorded, all those in favor of. Oh, we have to whatever the staff like, uh, whatever's, yeah, it's up, okay, we'll vote. So we'll move the mo-, all those in favor of the motion, please, uh. So we'll move the mo, all those in favour of the motion, please, uh, indicate accordingly. It's five votes, we need a few more. What do we need, what do we, three, three, seven. So, who hasn't voted yet? Do we record you against? Right? Can we note abstention by councillor Harlow therefore voting against? All right, I declare, I declare the motion carried. Sorry. No, unless you really want to discuss them. All right. All right, wonderful. Thank you everyone. Um, I'll declare a break until, uh, quarter past four. Thank you. Um, just be, I'm being mindful councillors, um, I think it's important that we make informed decision making. Happy for people to thoroughly ask questions, especially when it's extremely complex, um, matters, especially what we just went through. Um, uh, so by go, moving forward, I think we would just be mindful of time. If we don't finish, we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to come back tomorrow. So, um, but once again, let's, let's, let's get going. Okay? You got one? Lovely. All right, next, next one is Plan Zero Four Development Assessment Policy, uh, page 88, tab four, recommendation on page, uh, 89.
Happy to move that way.
Move Deputy Mayor, second to councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it, um, carried. Can I, can I just ask on, on just, on that, is, where is it? Just a question with regards to, um, what happens when a councillor contacts a staff member about a DA? Is it noted, is it reported?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might just revert to the substitute director of planning and compliance for the standard approach we would take in that scenario. Sorry.
Uh, through the CEO. I would have to take that on notice.
If we can have something to circulate it to us.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Next item is Plan Zero Five, street naming, Horningsay Park, page 95, tab five.
Question, Mr. Mayor, once it's moved and seconded.
Moved councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Green. Uh, councillor, would you like to speak for your motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Oh, she has, she up to her. Would, would you like to go for it?
Um, my question is that, uh, thank you for the work on this and, um, and the history behind the naming. I'm just wondering how that fits in with our policy to, um, in relation to First Nations naming of, of streets and buildings and things like that.
I refer to the CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might refer to the director of community, uh, lifestyle in relation to how names are offered for selection and how that process interfaces with, and the requirement or the, the, um, the option of Indigenous naming.
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, we're currently working, um, around, um, a policy position around the First Nations naming. Um, and part of that process is to look at a collection of names that we can ratify through our, um, elders and, um, and our land council and the like. And that those, that they will come back to council once that research has been identified. In terms of this particular report, um, I don't believe there's any reference to a First Nations name. Yes, so we are working through that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors, I have to declare an interest in this matter, my apologies. Um, I declare a non pecuniary, less than significant, uh, interest. Um, uh, the reason I have an interest is my son's name is Solomon. Um, and, uh, my, my interest is my son Jacob will get very jealous and think that I love Solomon more than Jacob. Um, now, but I'm serious, I don't want anyone, uh, anyone accusing me of naming streets after my children, because I don't really want to read those accusations on Facebook, along with all the other accusations on Facebook and made by others in Parliament and on there. Oh, yes. So, uh, it's less than significant, non pecuniary. Um, and you know what, for the sake of it, I'll leave the chamber. Might as well give you the chance.
So we're on Plan O Five, street naming Horningsay Park, page 95, tab five, with a recommendation on page 95 that has moved and seconded. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Against, I declare it carried. Thank you very much. Try to bring the man back in. I will. Oh, he's here.
Thank you. Next item is Plan Zero Six, quarterly report on, uh, development clause 4.6 variation development standard.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Page 100, tab six, recommendation page 100.
Can I ask that this be placed in confidential, please? Uh, I've been notified that, um, the address that is mentioned, uh, is earmarked, uh, it's involved in council's other plans. It's important that I go into it further when it's in confidential.
I just need a little, I need to, I need you to refer to what exactly. Now, I, this is just.
195 Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. But what I'm, what I'm getting at is what part of the clause, why does it have to be in there? But I need to note that this is providing, this has already been done. There's no decision making, it's about a receiving and noting.
Okay. Uh, well, uh, that particular address has been earmarked by, in council's own plans for the Lepington Town Centre as a school.
Yeah. Yeah? Yeah, I don't see, if that's, if that's public information, it's public information.
Well, I have a confidential document that I would need to table.
Yeah.
Page 102.
Can, can I recommend you put it up as, as an urgency motion? Only, because this is just about receiving and noting.
Okay.
Right, rather than actual, like, this has been determined, correct, this is, this application's already been determined.
Right. So the urgency motion is that it needs to go into the confidential session?
Yeah.
Uh, based on, uh, other information that I have that can only be tabled in a confidential session?
Confidential, because it's. Can you, would you be able to show me so I can at least have a look at the information, please? And I'm only saying, if this was about something that we were, uh, if we were deciding on something. Lovely, thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, councillor Green. I think that, um, what she showed me is, um, is important to know, but doesn't affect what the purpose of this report. This is a, uh, this report, and I'd, I'd like to move this motion with some other points to it as well. Uh, as it says in the executive summary, uh, the planning circular requires quarterly, uh, report to be tabled at council for information only, i.e. we're not, uh, we're not voting on anything, we're just receiving, uh, uh, the information. Uh, and for decisions that staff made under delegated authority with regards to variations above the planning standards, um, is it above, is it above 10% or above, um, or above the planning standards? So, um, move that, uh, I'll move the recommendation, uh, point number two, uh, receive the, is it, is that even marked confi, it would be marked confidential?
Yes.
It's marked confidential. Re, that, uh, receive the confidential, uh, letter as, uh, provided by councillor Green, uh, to the CEO.
Yes.
And then the point three, which I'll move in a moment. Um, and if anybody wants to have a look at that, or if you'll, if you can talk to councillor Green. Councillors, I want to, in the, in the spirit of this, um, the spirit of this report that comes to us, it's a quarterly report which provides councillors with informa, information, which then we can look at and question why, so on, and looking at it from a governor's point of view. We're not making decisions on it, it allows us to question and understand and provide, uh, oversight. And it's important that council does have oversight over the, over, uh, council. That's our roles and responsibilities. So I would like to add on to this, whilst these are not planning issues, um, they are, uh, things that, uh, that potentially we should, we should consider having an oversight on. So if I can just get my, uh, in the spirit of how this document is done. So the point three would be, council to receive a report about the creation of a policy with regards to the following oversight measures with regards to the following on a, on a quarterly basis. Payout amounts made to employees and on what basis those payouts were made. An understanding of how those payouts were calculated. A procedure for how mayor and councillors are to be consulted with regards to the appointment and dismissal of senior staff in accordance with section 337 of the Local Government Act. A report on how positions and proposed salaries within council are mark, are to be market tested. Appointment of an independent third party to provide a quarterly audit and report to the Audit Risk and Improvement Committee, as well as to the governing body on the above matters. And a procedure for the appointment and performance reviewing of the CEO taking in, taking in regards, taking, no, that doesn't make sense, taking, taking regards to the OLG guidebook regarding the oversight of CEOs, of general managers. Yep, yep. Well, it's a four, it's a quarterly report on information. And I just want to make a point that the recruitment process in council are operational matters and the mayor and councillors have no oversight with regard to these operational matters. Is there a second for the motion? Second to councillor Moon. Yep, so I. Sorry, microphone please.
Uh, if O Six is about planning
Yep.
and planning matters, I'm, I'm a little lost as to.
The relevance?
Well, no, but developments I'm fine with, but I'm a bit lost with, um.
I get it. Let me explain, because I can put it out, I thought I was going to do it separately as a mayor or minute, but I thought this may be the better mechanism, more as an urgency motion.
Okay.
Now, if you, if you look at the purpose of this report, planning, we don't have any more ability and haven't for, I think, 2017, 2018, whenever the changes were made, that councillors do not vote on development applications. And it's fully delegated to the staff. However, for an oversight purposes, the Department of Planning has said, provide a quarterly report to the governing body so they can have oversight of how 4.6 variations, 4.6 being a very, very, being a variation to the development standards, i.e. it's a bit above and beyond the, the rules for the area. Yeah, so I'm getting there. So basically what they're saying is, hey guys, you have nothing to do with this, right? From a, uh, decision making point of view. However, right, as resp, as being, the governing body being responsible for council, that you need to be made aware of things that are happening above and beyond the legal threshold. Right? Specifically with regards to planning. Does that make, right? So in light of, uh, uh, let's call it continuous improvement opportunities, as was raised in the, uh, documentation in the public domain currently, whilst there are, there are, items are raised with regards to, well, is it, and this is, this, and I'll, I shall, I'll put another point is that, that should this, um, seek advice, if I can add this point, please, seek advice from the Office of Local Government, whether a policy like this for the oversight. like this for the oversight, I feel for use capital word, capital letters for oversight, is appropriate? For the governing body to consider on a quarterly basis? And if it is not, then to not proceed.
Mister, Mister Mayor, can you explain? The matter that you're talking about, that would be under a different director, wouldn't it, than Lina Karkish?
It is, yeah.
So I fail to see how it's relevant to this particular.
Only because it's a quarterly reporting mechanism.
But it's a quarterly, quarterly, it's a quarterly report.
Yeah.
But I don't know whether it includes information like that, does it?
Not for planning, no, 100%, so you're right, it's not, it doesn't have specifically to do with planning. Alright, so it's not, it's not a specific planning thing, but what it is, it's an oversight mechanism that comes to council. So this report we have before us today comes to us on a quarterly basis to provide oversight of decisions that the organisation has made.
So perhaps it should be not in this particular thing. I, I like what you're doing, but I'm not so sure how you're tying it into this, just because it's a variation.
Just because it's a quarterly oversight report, that's why.
Quarterly oversight.
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter whether it's one or not, it's about creation of a policy, looking into it, speak to the OLG about it. If you're, I'm happy to move it as an urgency motion.
I'd move it as an urgency motion, I think it's confusing, this is, we all know this is about property development. We know all the time, Mister Mayor, that when we get variations to the standards in developments.
Yep. Deputy Mayor? Sorry, microphone please, councillor.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I'm of a different opinion in that just because we are moving something under a title doesn't mean it's automatically assigned to a particular person, if I'm not mistaken, so we will still continue, I'm imagining, to get that report that we are looking at now, in addition to that, we're asking for, I think what you're asking for is these other points to be considered, doesn't need to come from the director that this heading is under. If you understand what I mean, we can walk and chew gum in different director, it's under one resolution.
Which is common, yeah, you can have one, you can have one resolution that goes over different directives. But what, the relevance is saying that we would like quarterly reports that provides an oversight, like this provides an oversight, even though we have no decision-making part in any of these decisions. We don't want to have any, but that's what this report comes down, right?
I'm, I'm happy with what you're trying to do, Mister Mayor, I'd prefer it as a urgency, well, whatever motion you're going.
So what, what, I'm being advised that probably an urgency is potentially more preferred. So what if we moved that as an urgency motion and then references the way that this, that this 4.6 comes? Are you happy with that, Deputy Mayor? The secondary happy with that? Yep, yep, okay, great, councillor Hadeed?
Well, having seen the letter, why don't we defer this item? And direct the acting CEO to contact the relevant department, ask a few questions, come back to us and make a decision in this regard.
Which one, about the letter? Are you referring to the letter or the?
The letter, it does affect that one.
It doesn't, I've read it. All this report is about in front of us is saying, hey, we did this a couple of months, whenever it was, well, we did this.
Yeah.
All this report is saying. That letter is not our thing, because we're not doing anything else, we're going to, the staff will read it, noted. There's nothing else they can do about the contents of that letter. Because we're not involved in that. Let me, that's what they call it, give us this, let's do this, I'll sort it out, give me a moment. Alright, so you've got, you've got what I've moved in there as a motion of urgency. What, if you can put that on hold and I'll deal with that right after this matter, the urgency motion. Cool, so we'll do with the motion that is in the book to receive and know the report and number two, if you can take number two about the confidential letter? Once again, so the contents of that letter does, has no impact on this motion, zero.
4.6, this standard, so me permit a consent authority to consider development application that do not comply with specific department standing.
Yep.
But anyone, that one, it does affect, it does affect the land.
Yep.
The land affected by this letter.
Yep, but the decision's been made already.
Okay, so why, why should we go ahead and make a decision in this regard?
We're making. Councillor Hadeed, we're not making.
Later on, councillor, later on, the department come back and say, well, no, 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 you can't do that because I have intention to do something else. And I'm going to resign the land, already the land resigned for this purpose. Why, why we put us, put ourselves on this?
Staff have already made the decision, that, that development application has been determined. It's already been determined, it's approved, stamped, they can go build tomorrow.
It's already approved.
Yeah, that's why, this whole thing, it's already approved. Yeah, and all the staff are telling us, hey, we approve this, and we're telling you because it's a bit more than, we've had to use a 4.6 variation, so.
Okay, so if, if, if the AI already approved, so I believe we should direct the acting CEO or to write to the department any questions and tell them that the AI approved on date blah, blah, blah. So now, what is your decision or what, what is your purpose, what, blah, blah, you know?
Cool, so let's do a point, do a point three then, that the, that the CEO write to that, to the author of that letter, informing them of council's determination of the development application with respect to that property. There's no advice, nothing to do with us, it's their thing. I assume they already know about it. Bless you.
The question is, anyone from our staff were aware of the ex-department proposal?
Either, either way, it doesn't matter. Either way, it doesn't make a difference. It's up to them as a, it's up to them to do what they need to do. Yeah, doesn't impede what we're, we, you can't say, no, 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 it's not our thing.
We should know if we receive, does council receive any, any black information from the department, ex-department in this regard? Before we made this determination?
We aren't, councillor, we aren't determining anything. This is an FYI. We're not determining anything. It's staff.
Notifying us.
Notifying us, because the Department of Planning said they had to. If there was no 4.6 variation, we wouldn't even know about this.
Well, I understand that, I understand that. We've got nothing to do with it, we got our recommendation, we go for this recommendation, council staff. But the staff made a determination, determination in this regard. So the question, anyone from the staff receive any correspondence from XYZ department in this regard?
Yep, before the determination was made?
Yes.
Great, okay, I'll refer to the CEO. Councillor Hadeed, microphone please.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mister Mayor, just the question again.
The question, the question is, did the staff before determining the application receive information from any authority regarding their views of that land?
I'll just refer to substitute director of planning and compliance.
Again, through the CEO, I'd have to take that on notice.
Yeah, so this was determined 26th of June. Yep, so a month ago. 2023, that shouldn't be, that's not right. 2020, typo, so I'll put that out there. So can I recommend just to move forward that the staff take it on notice, everybody will get a response. Councillor Green's comment is noted, CEO now has a copy of it, your point about it being sent out is there, so it does get sent out. Right, all good? Wonderful, wonderful, great. Yeah, microphone please councillor.
Just waiting for an answer from my request.
Yeah, he's taking the question on notice, so he'll send it out, yeah, wonderful. Alright, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare it unanimous. Yep, next on, it's a, a urgency motion, I determine it urgent because issues of governance and oversight and opportunity for improvement need to be taken as, harnessed as quickly and swiftly as possible. And that's why it's urgent. And if it doesn't, and if, I actually don't know whether I'm technically allowed to move an urgency motion, but if not.
I'm happy to move that as an urgency motion, if you would like me to.
Great, we'll do that.
I mean, I'm happy to anyway, even if you wouldn't like me to.
Are you, no, if you move it as an urgency motion, what's your argument councillor, what's your, what's your, what's your argument Deputy Mayor?
The opportunity for continuous improvement should be embraced at every, every time it presents itself, and here's one of them.
Yep, and it's urgent because we.
Because we should always be looking to improve wherever we can, and let's do it now.
Yeah, and I think it's urgent as well because it's being, potentially our last council meeting, if not, it's definitely our last council meeting before going into caretaker mode.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I think it's setting us up for a much better post-election, whoever will be here, it's a much better place than.
Legacy improvement.
It's a legacy improvement.
Indeed, wonderful, I accept that as urgency, great, we have the motion there, I'm happy to second that motion. No, she's, she's, deputy mayor's moving it. And I'm seconding it, seconding it. Great, any discussion? Yep? Can you just add a point three to it Deputy Mayor, by say, this, that that this should function, the intent is, the intent is that this should function similar to the 4.6 variation quarterly reports.
I think that's important so that we know that we want all of those in the same sort of format and mechanism.
I have a question then, Mister Mayor.
Yep, we'll have to clarify something, but you.
Well, my question is, I thought we received a report on the number of vacancies and the number of, we received that. Only in the governance committee meeting. Should this be in the governance committee meeting?
I think it should be reported to the full council, considering not everyone turns up, but it can be. But, but, well, well, let me, let me put it this way, right, I'm not preempting anything. So I think Deputy Mayor had been advised that it should be, it should be just saying that to create, it should be, first we have to create a policy, number one, that does the following, that provides reports on a quarterly basis regarding the following. Yeah, just a bit, it's convoluted, so my apologies.
Well, you need, not about the creation of a policy, that's got to be reworded, that council creates a policy as one and council receive a report is the second thing.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you councillor Rhodes. Could take a bit of a break if you want to come and join me here, or take over.
I'm missing my V.
Point of order, councillor Rhodes likes V better than solo. Alright, can I just? Yeah, just want to see if the Director of Corporate Support is. I won't use the word happy. Satisfied with.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, just a suggestion in relation to point one, that council creates a policy that reports on the following oversight measures each quarter. Semi-colon, A, B, C through to F.
Alright, I'm happy with it as well. Yep. Fantastic, alright, fantastic. Hey. Staff too. So imagine you you at least have this done in your 16 years. Yep, councillor Rhodes, your question?
Mayor, can I answer that question?
Yeah, go, yeah, go for it, sorry.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, that would be the Director of Corporate Support.
That's an operational matter, ultimately council can only direct the CEO. Alright, wonderful, alright, I'll put the motion, there's no further discussion. All those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare that's unanimous, please be noted. Bless you. Alright, we're back into Plan O7, proposed heritage listing for lot 17, Lee Cox Lane, Cassula, page 103, tab 7, replication on page, with the recommendation on page 104.
Happy to move that way, Mister Mayor.
Everyone move Deputy Mayor, second to councillor Rhodes, any discussion?
Trumped again.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against? I declare, I declare the motion carried. Next item is com 01, grants donation and community sponsorship, page 112, tab 8, recommendation on page 110. Move councillor Green? Which planning matters? In the addendum. I'm just going off the run sheet. How was the?
The City of Liverpool.
Oh, Plan 8, Plan 9.
The Eretroplats Contribution Plan.
Look, I, I, I just got to go through the, let's just say in the booklet, sorry.
It is number eight, is the City of Liverpool council.
Yeah, no, yeah, we'll, we'll work off the run sheet councillors, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of books and it'll get confusing for everyone here and online. Okay, so com zero one, grants donation, community sponsorship report, it's moved councillor Green, it was seconded deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried unanimously. Next item is corp zero one. Sorry, when, are you writing down unanimous when it says unanimous? Yeah, please, whenever we say unanimous, just to be clear. Next item is corp zero one, investment report, June twenty, June two thousand and twenty four, page one twenty five, tab nine, recommendation one twenty six, move councillor Rhodes, second to councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is corp zero two, ethical conduct policies, page one thirty five, tab ten, with a recommendation on page one hundred and thirty five, move deputy mayor. Yeah, light on who's councillor Rhodes, can you put your microphone off please?
Sorry.
Do you have a second or for your motion, councillor Moon? Councillor Rhodes, sorry, deputy mayor, your question?
Yes.
I mean, I know we've been through it before, but I'm just after on, in book two B, page five eighty, on the conflict of interest policy. The first point on the table. The question is, would I or anyone associated with me benefit from or be disadvantaged by my proposed decision or actions? Is there a guideline on what anyone associated with me means?
Thank you deputy mayor, I'll revert to the director corporate support for his interpretation, he may want to pass it on.
I would, CEO, I'd ask the GC to respond to that question, please.
I, I think there's some material in the code of conduct itself, but, but we can give you some advice on notice about that deputy mayor, if that's suitable.
Thank you, I think that would be great if we could have that sent around, that would be awesome, thank you very much.
Does it need to be included, it's for a point of clarification, is it's deferred?
I wouldn't mind seeing it before we, so that we're very clear on what the definitions are.
Yep.
It's on the second book, I mean, it's mentioned lots of times, but the first time it's mentioned is on page five eighty in the addendum book two B. So perhaps then perhaps then if we remove the conflicts of interest policy out of this group of four.
I, I, look, I, I think there's merit in making sure that it goes out on, and they looked at it, I think that's a positive thing, and it's going out, coming back. Can we just go back up? Point one. It's going out for twenty eight days.
Okay, so a report will come back, okay, if we could just note that that question would be answered, taken on notice, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, get some clarification and do up and send it.
Sorry councillor, could you just tell me what it is that, that I can identify it in the book now that I've found it?
Book two B, page five hundred and eighty, the first question in the first table. What is the situation?
That, what your question is questioning associated with me?
Yes, I want a definition of associated with me.
Well, we know what it means.
Perfect example.
Yeah, it could be.
Thank you everyone, through the chair firstly, and number two, if you can, one speaker at a time.
Through, through the chair, perfect example to have is what transpired today with councillor Harrell. Voting on a matter that might or might not benefit grandson or a son or that's probably goes right into that, are you allowed to do that, how does it work? So that's great, lovely.
So I don't have a question about it because, but does it need to be explained to other people?
Yeah, I think, I think, I, I think it's a good point that deputy mayor and councillor Amun make, you know, associated, you know, associated, associated with me has interpreted, could be wide, broad, I think it's.
Well, it is, because they go into whether you are a, a director on a board or something like that, that's defined.
Let me, let me give, let me give you an example, right, right? So if we don't provide any clarification with this, so picture, picture, I don't know, I'll pick on, I'll pick councillor Moon or myself, right? If we went to rezone land that improved the value of it and the land was owned by our family members, are they associated with us?
It goes further than that than just your family members.
Well, that's what the clarity, the thing is. Because I know, I know, for example, if I, I'm considering today's climate, I'm, yeah, I, I, I couldn't, I couldn't imagine, imagine what that would look like if I voted on matters for people who are close to me, associates to me, and rezoned their land, and if they're a direct blood relative. You know, considering at the moment I'm being hung and quartered because somebody put a Facebook post about me, so. Anyway.
Mr Mayor, isn't it explained in the conflict of interest? I've seen it presented by this council where it's clearly defined what the, what, so just replace it with whatever you've clarified it before, that was very clear.
Maybe we should get general counsel to answer that because he'll be more on the legal side of it, of who's related to what, and what they can and can't do, how it's classified, because at the moment everyone's going on their own interpretations. When I filled out my conflict of interest document only a couple of days ago, I was advised that it's your wife and your siblings. That's all, your, your children, so now we've got grandchildren, you've got brothers, you've got sisters, you've got aunts, you've got long lost cousins, being Lebanese, probably, I've got my auntie's husband's sister's cousin's cat, who knows?
Councillors know that the answer to that number one, I would hope that they all know that.
I, I, I think.
I'm new, you just said I'm new, I wouldn't know, please enlighten me if you know.
Mic, microphone please, and through the chair everyone.
Read your conflict of interest, read the roles and, and just read all the documentation about.
Mi, 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 microphone.
Be shocked because you've got to abide by that, you have to abide by that.
All right, so councillors, everyone, just before I put to the deputy, I, I think it's just the, just ensuring there is consistency with all these, I think that's, when policies are saying different things, just bring them together, I think the intent is there, deputy mayor, did you want to add on to that, or can we move on? Microphone please. Councillors.
No, I was asking that we could move on, we've already asked the general counsel, who's going to put a definition in there, thank you.
Wonderful, all right, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is CFD zero one, public art programme for Big Park Liverpool, page one forty, tab eleven, recommendation one forty, deputy mayor? You're going to move? All right, de. Yeah, move councillor Green, seconded. Councillor Harrell. Any discussion? I'll move the motion, all those in favour. Sorry, all those in favour? Against.
Can we have an explanation as to?
One second, let's just do it, let's just do a division once, one, one second, hold on. One, two, three, four.
Far, can we have, what is the objection to this, because
We didn't.
You seem to be united in the objection to this, and yet I don't know why.
We've gone back to, we've gone back to the, we've gone past that, so.
So you're not going to allow a question mark?
If you want to recommit it, or if you want to have a debate, go for it, what do you?
I voted on the wrong, wrong item.
He was looking at the electric vehicles.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't seen it, yeah.
Yeah, I think electric. Yeah, you want to, I don't know, the mover wants to move forward, do you want to move, would you like to speak for your motion councillor Green?
Three hundred.
Recommendation.
The recommendation is in the book. Well, I do, I do recall that this the public art programme for Big Park did have its genesis in a Meryl Minnit. What art should be available within Big Park that reflected the concept of peace and healing and whatever, and I thought that we were all on board with that, we've had several presentations on it recently in our governance and councillor briefings, so I support the motion.
Any speakers against, for, against, councillor deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank councillor Green for her comments, this did start out, had its genesis as a Meryl Minnit, and we have moved a long way from the intention of that Meryl Minnit, in my opinion, and I think that there's probably a more prudent way to spend this funding, and so I won't be supporting the motion.
What's, what's the total amount of money? Just to the CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, as reported on page one four four, the total costs associated with the Big Park Public Art Programme, twenty four, twenty five through to thirty is one point nine eight million dollars.
Can I speak for the motion, okay, Mr Mayor? What I like about this motion is that it's a way of an ongoing funding for something that council would like. The objection that if I'm understanding it is more about what sort of art is going in there than whether we should be having a, a ongoing system that enables art to be provided in the Liverpool LGA. I thought as a, as a system for delivery of public art, that was not a bad idea. Now, if there's a question mark about the amount of money that should be involved, but as an idea, I think I support that, Mr Mayor. Because we know that we're, it's going to become more and more difficult for us to get funding through grants, so that's the reason why I thought.
Sorry, just clarification, when you say us, do you refer to councillors or do you refer to the administrator? Microphone please.
At this stage, I refer to councillors, I mean, this was something that was discussed, as we said in the governance committee meeting, there wasn't an objection that I heard in there.
I just, I just need clarification because we were here two days ago and you voted against, fighting against administration, you were happy to go into administration. So I think that when you're saying us, and there, we need to be clear, that this is not a decision for an elected official as of next week, and you were happy with that on Monday.
Well, Mr Mayor, first thing, I don't know what is happening next week, and secondly, I think, and I'll, I'll say it clearly here now, I think as unfortunate as it is, I think that at least an administrator would clear up weather and clear people's names, get it clear.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. Sorry, councillor, microphone please.
What we are talking about here, Mr Mayor, to be clear, is on some sort of financial support system for a public art programme, regardless, regardless of the future that we don't know at the moment. I thought that it is something that this council has to start looking at because there might be less amount of money available to us through grants or other means, so to me it made sense.
Can I just clarify?
What's that? Microphone please.
Don't turn it off, the question is, you can question the amount of money, but as a concept, I think that it's relevant.
No, so you're speaking for, you're, you're happy to spend the two million dollars, just under two million dollars?
Well, if, if council wants to make a suggestion about how much money that should be, this is the time to do it.
Yep, I understand, one.
Mr Mayor, I just want to clarify something, please, because councillor Rhodes said that there appeared to be a problem with the type of art in the park, and I want to clarify that my comments in no way spoke about the type of art in the park. I spoke about having moved away from the Meryl Minnit, which I believe was a reflective statue of Mother Mary, and that we had moved far from that initial Meryl Minnit, and I wasn't happy to spend that amount of money, I didn't say, and didn't put comment on any art in the park.
Yep, one sec councillor, then I get to you councillor Goodman.
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor, well, for years I've been saying local government should go to the basic services. There is a lot of people every day contacting us in regard of food passing, in regard of playing ground, in regard of fixing the road, in regard of blah, 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 it's all local government basic. So now to go and spend that much money, it is not our priority now. Our priority to go and spend the money, put more food pass, fix the garden, clean the road, pick up the rubbish on time. That is my priority now, so please, for God's sake, spending a lot of money like that, so the people are getting very upset. The people can look, not in the arts in Big Park, can look at the potholes on the street, can look on the grass, how, 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 how big it is, can look at the rubbish in the, in the street, and look, this is the bad thing, things, we have to go and do it, I know there is too many established areas, still there is no playground for the kids. So please, go and spend the money on playing yard for the kids, this is what local government all about, that's what local government all about. This is our priority, if you have, if you have enough money, you have luck, very big surplus, you can do something else, no problem, but get your job done right now, thank you.
Councillor Goodman?
Just a question, does this have anything to do with the statue of Mother Mary? And if I.
Well, he's asking whether it has anything to do with the statue of Mother Mary, yeah, go on.
If I vote against this, am I voting against the statue of Mother Mary? Or is it two separate, is it two separate things, I just want to, I just want clarity on that, please.
Can I get some clarification, so?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, my understanding is that the statue of Mother Mary is not public art as defined and stands alone.
And, and that's funded already in the budget? Sorry councillors, thank you.
It's separately funded and for the most part will be self performed and donated.
Yep, great, so it doesn't affect it, that still goes ahead, all right, just mindful of time everyone. All, all those, if there's councillor Green, would you like your right of reply?
I would just like to make two points, in that, and I acknowledge my fellow councillor Hadid's comments, but I just like to remind us all that it is creative arts and public art that actually brings people together. And as a multicultural, multi faith community, how those ideas of spirituality, of peace and of reflection can be expressed in all different ways. So I view this as an opportunity in promoting a programme that would, that brings our community together in, in ways that maybe, you know, in terms of thinking about what's presented and whatever, so. So, um, there's a lot of, of very good research and, um, and evidence about, uh, strong cohesive communities and the creative arts space.
Well, Mr Mayor, can I add another point for the recommendation? Number four, direct the CEO to write to the relevant department requesting a fund to do this project in Big Street. Because, because, thank you in consideration, the government, state government, spend millions of dollars on, uh, Panama, I think. Panama, millions of dollars. Okay, add another point, request the relevant ministry, you know, to get some grant to go ahead with this project. But, and again, and again, as I said, we have to go back to the local government basic services and go ahead and do it and, and go and lobby the state government to get more money and do this project.
Yeah, councillor, that, uh, that's a different motion and you can have that as a foreshadowed motion.
Um, Mr?
This is, yeah, we got to get to the, move on, so yes.
Okay, just quickly, Mr Mayor.
Actually, hold on a second, hold on a second. Oh, sorry, my apologies, councillor Green, I've done bad by you. That was your right of reply. I do apologise. No one should have spoken after that. Um, because of that just happened, I afford you the right of reply again. So my apologies. If you want to, if you want to express it, we've exhausted this matter and they should, no one should have spoken after you.
No.
Can whisper in your ear if you want to say a few words for you?
I guess we can, uh, trust our staff to, to secure the, um, funding streams, whether through multicultural New South Wales and other arts programmes, both state and federal, that would go towards a project like this in bringing our community together. And I am a great believer in the arts as a healing and, uh, a co, bringing people together in a cohesive and wonderful way.
Thank you. I'll now put the motion. You can read it, but you can't talk, please. There's no more. No, no, she's had her right of reply. Everyone's had this matter and it's, well, it has been exhausted. Right? Yep. All right, I'll put the motion as moved by councillor Green. Is there, sorry, councillor Hadid, do you want to do that foreshadowed motion? All going once, going twice? Is it yes or no? Is that a yes? Yes or no, one word, yes or no?
Can I?
No, I'll take that as a no. Great, everyone. I'll put the motion as moved by councillor Green. All those in favour, please raise your hands. One, two, three. Those against, one, two, three. I'll call the division. All those in favour, please, all those in favour, please stand. Stretch the legs, it's needed. Right, thanks. Those against? I declare the motion lost. Now, next item is CFD 02, Parks Governance Review, 146, tab 12, recommendation on page 147. Move, deputy mayor, seconded. Councillor Moon, any discussion?
Excuse me, which one are we doing?
CFD 02, the Parks Governance Review, page 146. Tab 12, recommendation on page 147. Move, deputy mayor, second to councillor Moon. Is there any discussion?
Just thank you to the external staff who came in to present for us that the briefing session was very well received and all the questions were answered. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Councillor Hadid? Oh, sorry. Op, Operation 01 Electric Vehicle Charging Stations on Public Land Policy, the one that you were, you thought you were on before.
So we'll move this, I'll move this motion with an addition, thanks.
Page, record, page 153, tab 13, recommendation on page 153. Move, councillor Rhodes, seconder. Second to councillor Hall. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, councillor Rhodes, you're extra point.
Just one extra point that we said that we'd include this in at the governance committee meeting. And I know that council said they already did it, but I think it should be read, read in this, uh, recommendation that, uh, council works in collaboration with surrounding LGAs and other organisations to maintain consistent decisions in service provision, at least throughout Western Sydney. Or South West Sydney.
Do you want to say it a little bit slower so it can be?
Okay. Number four, works in collaboration.
Number three or number four?
Number, oh, three, sorry. Number three.
Just slowly, please, for the.
Works in collaboration with surrounding LGAs and other organisations. Other organisations to maintain consistent decisions in service provision throughout South West Sydney, if you like. That's it. Yeah, get rid of the include at the governance, that was where it was brought up.
Second or happy with that? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Zoom, zoom, let's go. All righty. Committees, committees, committees.
Can we move it as a whole, please?
I'll second that.
Councillor Rhodes?
I'm happy to second that with one correction. Just being that on the governance committee meetings on item six on page 208 of the booklet, there's no mover and seconder recorded on item six.
Yep.
Which I'm sure can be very easily corrected by the minutes.
Staff just go through the records and fix that up and just, just note it. Doesn't, doesn't have to be put on to, on to the books, just, just know. Um, councillor Goodman?
I've got, uh, I don't know if you call it a question or a urgency motion or regarding, regarding change of parking permission in Atkinson Street, Liverpool.
Now, what, no, I think, I think what, I think the way to do it, councillor, is where is the traffic, where is traffic?
I couldn't find traffic in there.
Is it Conf? Which number is it, councillor Rhodes, where is it? Why don't I go online? All right. Which one? I'm not seeing it. Huh? It's not about the, I'm just trying, where is it on the run sheet? All right, I'll tell. Oh, sorry, yep, sorry, thank you, everyone. Really appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so we can deal with that, councillor Goodman, when we get to the traffic committee. Right, what you want to bring up. So we'll move the committees as a whole, move councillor. Councillor Goodman, yeah, councillor, second to councillor McNaul. If you're all right with that. All those in fa, any discussion? All those in favour? Against, declare it unanimous. Questions with notice? Is everyone, uh, councillor Rhodes, are you happy with your response?
Uh, yes, look, I want to thank the staff, uh, for their, uh, their report on it. Um, the, there is one thing that I would like to, I'll move a motion, Mr Mayor. That, um, because the, the, let me explain it first. The problem is that, uh, the Hunt family brought all their family up for a big reunion for the purpose of seeing the plaque. That was a great cost of them and, uh, of course, there was no plaque there to see. So the motion would simply be send a formal letter to Cybra Hunt, wife of the late Harry Hunt, apologising for the delay in the provision of the plaque and to formally advising her of the date that the plaque is actually in place so family members can once again make the special trip to Liverpool in order to view the plaque without further disappointment.
Yep, all good.
No. No, it's never been done.
All right, yeah, I think we can, um, happy with that.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that very much, just so that they don't, um, sorry, my bad. No, no further disappointments and, uh, they know how to organise their family to get them here for their family reunion when the plaque actually is in place.
We've sorted it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was able to sort it, just sort it.
It was negotiated by.
I fixed it.
Wonderful. Move, seconder. Second to councillor Green. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. Question with notice two, animal shelter. Microphone, please. Amun, councillor Amun, microphone off, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I withdraw my question to the animal shelter, which is in later in the book. Thanks.
Wonderful, okay, it's been drawn, wonderful. Councillor McNaul. Question with notice three, council civic expenses policy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank staff for their, um, response. So to be very, very clear for the recording and for those watching online, there has been no claims lodged on the, by the mayor or on behalf of the mayor and there have been no transactions or reimbursements made and there were no claims or payments made by the mayor on behalf of, or on behalf of the mayor related to this matter, correct?
Thank you, deputy mayor, that is correct. So in, in sequence, no, not applicable, not applicable.
Thank you. Can I, can I, um, can I propose a motion?
Your motion, councillor?
That due to the intense interest in this matter that council post on their social media information to reflect the answer to this question.
Do we have a seconder for that? Second to councillor Moon. Any discussion? Oh, I'm happy to speak for it. Um, so just to be clear, crystal clear, because I don't see any numbers here. So there's been zero. What is the amount? If any, it's zero. No money.
No money, zero, nothing.
Zero dollars. Right, nothing.
Nil.
Nothing. Can't wait to be reading about that and I look forward, as councillor, you said you'd, uh, you'd have my back, look forward to making sure that the whole world knows that no money for legal fees has been reimbursed to the mayor. Uh, zero.
Only reimbursed or even claimed?
Claimed, reimbursed, you know, proposed, sought.
Do you want to say that in several languages, Mr Mayor?
Uh, we can translate. All right. Zero. Lovely. I'll put that, uh, any further discussion? I'll put that, all those in favour? Against? Sorry, councillor, just seeing if that's unanimous or not. You're voting for or against, councillor Green? Yeah? Are you voting for or against? Voting for? Against, I declare it unanimous. Thank you, councillors. All right. Book five. I'll propose let's do these and let's, unless anybody needs a quick break for, huh? Five minutes. Five minutes? Literally, and I'll, and I know I'm the one who's probably the worst. Can I ask, I'll call a recess for a comfort break and we're returning at 5:42. 5:42. Thank you. Forty-three. Next item is, we're going to the end of booklet, number five. Plan 08, adoption of the section 712, Aeroposts Contributions Plan. Page 1105, recommendation 1106.
Move that way.
Moved, sec, move councillor Rhodes, seconded, deputy mayor. Any discussion? I just want to, um, uh, thank and congratulate the staff and everyone involved in this. Uh, these are not easy things, uh, to do. Um, and it's once again a demonstration of the one of very complex matters completed by the staff. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is plan 09, page 1209, recommendation on page 1210. Deputy mayor?
Um, Mr Mayor, I, oh, I just don't know, let me just have a look. I don't, I can't support the motion as it is in the book and it will need to be changed, but I need to ask questions first.
Yep, go for it.
So what, what, thank you very much to the staff for the, um, for the work on this. I'm not sure though that what we have before us captures the spirit of what we were trying to achieve. Um, and if I can, hopefully with the, with the help of others who, I think, I think it was a unanimous vote back then, but I can't be certain. Um, so by implementing, so, so when, if I can just look at the different portions of this. Um, point, where are we? So when we look at the, the options to address item eight, item seven and item four, which I can find on page 1212, um, to address item eight of the resolution, which has to do with contribution, that's okay, that's not too bad, but sorry, item seven um, is about to waive contributions on the development of granny flats. Um, I, I, I'm, I don't agree with the wording that says no contributions to be collected from new development for the construction of secondary dwellings, also known as granny flats, because that motion was passed on, and the date escapes me now, and I think I have written it in my notes, but that should have been implemented from the day that the motion was, the, the next day after the motion being passed. Um, so, you know, we went out and, and that was, that was what we had resolved. And so people who had, you know, planning in for a secondary, secondary dwelling would expect not to pay the contributions on the date after we passed the motion. I understand from the readings that, um, that there is no identified way to reimburse people who may have already been charged that after the date that we passed the motion. However, I'm in, informed and not fully that there is a mechanism that a neighbouring council in Fairfield used. in Fairfield uses to reimburse contributions back to home buyers. So there are tools out there that I am not fully available, aware of how they work, but they work for other councils, so I'm hoping that we might be able to implement that. And the other question would be, and I'll just get them all out at once. When we talk about city centre contributions, again, the words all new development applications is used, that's, that does not capture the spirit of the motion and the motion is intended that all developments that are completed by the twenty-seventh of March, twenty twenty-eight be included in that, captured in that point. And some of those, some of those DAs are already approved, but the buildings are not begun. And this is the whole idea, is to stimulate that activity, that people are sitting on DAs that are approved. So the word new doesn't work to capture the spirit of the motion. I'm happy for other people to, to guide me, but, but I don't think this captures what we wanted, because we wanted it to start from the, the day that we resolved and we wanted it to not include just new DAs in the city centre.
Councillor Rhodes?
On, continuing on with councillor, the deputy mayor McNaught's question. Is it correct that it was to be implemented and built within a certain time? I think that motion said.
It had to be completed before. Sorry, it had to be completed, and I'm, I'm sure the dates are probably right. The twenty-seventh of March, twenty twenty-eight, it was a four-year period. So I'm assuming we passed that motion on the twenty-seventh of March, twenty twenty-four, but without checking that, but I'm, I'm sure it must have been that date. Twelve, ah, okay, thank you. So it's, yeah, the developments do have to be completed councillor Rhodes, you're correct, within that period, but they don't need to be DAs that haven't been assessed already. They can, they, it's supposed to stimulate DAs that are sitting there and not being, not being activated.
So wouldn't you read that, as long as they put a DA in that is going to be completed by a certain date, they'd be included in it?
So if I, if I can just, you know, the purpose of this is we have a housing crisis, and they're not my words, and they're, they are the words of many, many people, including the New South Wales government. We have no cranes being built, we have a massive slowdown, rentals are going through the roof because of the lack of supply. This is about an urgent measure to get things going now, not six months, a year, when a DA, a DA is determined, it's about now. There's a lot of projects that are in the pipeline. We had, there were supposed to be significant amount of buildings going in the city centre, a lot of projects are now on hold because numbers are just, they don't stack up. So those people should not be disadvantaged. Ultimately, look, I would love to have, say that this policy will get five buildings up. You know, the way that is, I think we'll be lucky to get one or two up. We, but we need to at least get going and we don't want, we don't want to make it harder. And this should be promoted, we didn't get enough media about this, we didn't put this out, push this out there enough. Because at the end of the day, yes, we are the sixth slowest council. And you know what? When you have, but we, we are the number one with determination of applications. We approved, and the last thing was the financial year, one point seven billion dollars of development. That's number one in the state, number two is Sydney City Council, that one point four billion dollars. And then everyone else is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So we are by a country mile beating them. And because of the complexity of these applications, we're never going to be the quickest. But what we need to do is make, so we're showing we're doing our job, but what we now need to do is, is keep on going. So this is the place that can develop, because that, that can get moving. So let's get everyone, let's make it where it actually applies to everybody that's there. Surely there is a mechanism that can be created for that. If it's, from my understanding, I'll get that from the CEO, that you cannot just amend a condition of consent regarding, in its solely regarding contributions. However, if you were to modify something else slightly, call it brick colour and contributions, would that, is that one way to do it?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, not, clearly not my area of expertise, I'll just refer back to the substitute director planning and compliance on that matter.
Through the CEO, yeah, so page twelve, ten of the report, it, it talks about the reasons why we can't retrospectively impose this. So the existing case law establishes that a condition of consent cannot be imposed or modified to require the doing of something retrospectively. So the, the mayor is correct that if there is a, if the modification is submitted, that amends the actual development, not the condition of consent, then it can be considered.
And it could be as simple as change of a colour?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay. Well, there's a pathway. Yep. So then, would it be that, that, that contributions can, that the refund of contributions, is it refund? Or no, it's not refund, it's the?
So if we could say the contributions already paid to council cannot be refunded via a modification application related solely to contributions?
Well, we don't want them already paid. Well, we don't, yeah, but I think, I think also as well, there is about, it's not about collecting the contribution and then, and then letting people get it back, because that's, that's a massive impediment into it. It's.
It's about if you, it's, it's about if we can, so if people haven't commenced their DA, they haven't paid the contribution yet. Is that correct?
So, yeah, yeah, let's say that, any, if we can note this down, I'll speak slowly. Any? Sorry, go back, in order for the policy with regards to waiving development contributions for the above specified period can only be considered if there is an amendment to the development itself? Yep, so subject, yeah, and? Yeah, I'll put some, yeah, I was saying, CEO was saying put a caveat on it and just. So how does that then go into the motion there? Is, can I just clarify, that's, captures what we just discussed, would you say, or to the CEO?
I might, might refer to general counsel for comment.
I think there does need to be some caution here. I, I understand the matters that the deputy mayor has raised. The reason you have what you have in front of you is that council staff have worked very hard to find a way through what are some very hard constraints in the legislation. It's, it's not, I, I don't think it's correct that just, like changing the paint would enable recalculation of contributions, because contributions are calculated on the basis of things like gross floor areas and, and matters like that. So it would need to be a modification that, that leads to a change in the calculating, in the things that go into the calculation, if that makes sense. So you, you just need to be cautious, I suppose, in setting an expectation, because we'll have to work around what, what those constraints are.
So could we say then, through the CEO, that noting what has been discussed to allow staff to come back with?
I mean.
Make this one like that?
Yeah, you, you could put further pressure on until we squeak and we, we can, we can have another look at it, but, but we may not be able to achieve fully what you want.
Yeah, but.
The, the way to fully get there is probably a new contributions plan, right? So the, everything else is a bit of a workaround and what, what you've got is the, the best that we could come up with so far.
Councillor Deed?
Here will look, I am of the opinion that any DA approved before council resolution should not be affected by this recommendation. It should be fully paid. Any DA after our resolution, what this is fine, nothing's to do with it. But if a DA before our resolution, never been finalised, but our plan is, okay? So it's fine. There's nothing wrong with it. But any DA already approved before our resolution should be paid in full. As simple as that.
Yep. Microphone councillor?
A, a comment that that, that's not the original motion that we passed, that we just had a discussion on. Can we, can we defer this matter to the end of the meeting? I think it's.
Yep.
Might take a little bit more time and, and maybe, yeah, I want to.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy that we just defer, just defer this back to the end of the meeting. Happy to second that, oh, anyone happy to second that?
Second that.
Yep. Seconded councillor Amun, all those in favour? Against, declare it, we'll come back to that one.
Okay. Traffic committee, plan ten. Lismore Street, page twelve seventeen. Moved councillor Green, seconded councillor Amun. Thirded councillor Harrow. Councillor Goodman, you wanted to mention something about traffic committee minutes as well?
Yes, it's not about the minutes, it's a, I'd say it's an urgency motion for traffic. Can we get it up on the screen? It's the little, Atkinson Street between Shepherd Street and the railway line. There's a fifteen-minute park in there, it's affecting the businesses, they can't unload containers, they can't load trucks. I think it'll have to change to, the motion is support a parking restriction change on Atkinson Street between Shepherd Street and the railway line that replaces current fifteen-minute parking with loading zone between the hours of five AM and five PM and fifteen-minute parking at other times of the day, which remains the same as what it is at the moment. Directs the acting CEO to immediately implement the changes above. Oh, this change above, sorry. It's, and the urgency of it is due to safety. It's a, it's a severe accident waiting to happen. The, there's, there's trucks that come and park there for hours trying to get into the driveway and block the streets, container shipments.
Yep.
And they actually can't get in there because people are parking their cars there for hours and days in a row.
Yep, if it's, if it's that dangerous, I'm happy to accept it as a, as an, as an urgency as an urgency motion. Is there a second for the motion? Councillor Amun, all right, so can we just park that? We'll do the minutes and then we'll come back to the urgency motion? Councillor Green? Yeah. Rather than move it as an amendment, we'll keep, we'll just keep it separate. So. About Lismore Street or Atkinson Street? Yep, no worries, so we'll deal, we'll, so we'll put the urgency motion, we'll deal with it right after this, after Lismore Street, committee minutes. Councillor Green, call for Lismore.
Look, this has come to traffic committee, it's an urge, it really is an urgent issue for the residents in that street. I forget the, I did attend the, the traffic committee, the, the volume of cars going through that small street is just way beyond its capacity. So what is being suggested of no, no right turn into Lismore from First Avenue, no more, no right turn into Lismore from Pacific Palms is at least something that will give residents some much needed relief. So I would urge councillors to support it, please.
Yep, all good. Wonderful. Okay, let's deal with that, although if there's no further discussion about Lismore Street in the minutes for the traffic committee, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it unanimous. Councillor Rhodes, unanimous? Traffic committee?
No, we're not talking about Atkinson Street. This is, this is, this is Lismore Street. It's come out of the traffic committee. Yep, wonderful, okay, done. Great, councillor Goodman, we have the urgency motion. If we can just look at it quickly regarding Atkinson Street and the, the public safety issues that are existing there. Support a parking restriction, direct the CEO. I would say, I would say rather than direct the CEO, delegate, the council delegate to the CEO to make this change, subject to any other approvals required.
Could I please add there, this is probably something that would be really good to do, is to actually to liaise with Traffic for New South Wales? And, and police. Well, I don't, I don't, I think that's the idea of the urgency motion.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, can we put liaise with traffic, New South Wales if need be?
Well, I, I guess I, I'm thinking about the processes that occur at the traffic committee in issues such as this would be rest also on the input from the traffic for New South Wales and local police. So I think at least those two bodies should be consulted or work, excuse me.
Councillor, councillor Amun, please don't interrupt councillor Green.
That's okay. So if, are we, if the, the additional point should be to, to liaise with Traffic for New South Wales and the local police, whoever is in charge of traffic, to, on this particular matter and how it can, how it can be implemented?
Through the chair, if, if we change that to liaise with authorities if need be, because by the time you're going to name Traffic, Traffic for New South Wales Police, then you're going to name emergency, then you're going to name blah, 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 with whoever's relevant to it and then that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, relevant authorities?
Yeah. Yeah, because otherwise you're going to sit there and name a hundred?
No, no, those are the two, is Traffic for New South Wales and local police.
Okay, so what happens with ambulance people?
Because, because local police will have.
Microphone please councillors.
Local police will have, if there's a crash history, that would be, so they can support. They would support, same as Traffic for New South Wales will in terms of the traffic flow for that particular area. I'm just saying from my experience on the traffic committee that, that, that would be the kind of process that would be expected.
The same. Just going to, sorry, if I can just refer to the, the CEO, who's got something to add?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just refer that to the substitute director planning and compliance.
Thank you through the CEO, yeah, just to confirm, Transport for New South Wales and New South Wales Police are the two voting members on the traffic committee and will be the most appropriate authorities to, to name in this recommendation.
Cool. All right. No, all right, I think we get the gist of it, if there's no further discussion, no?
Can I just ask a question? Does that go back to the local, to the traffic committee?
That's what point two is about, whatever, if it needs to, let him do it, but he's got delegated authority. All right, if there's no further, councillor Goodman?
So just a question, does it have to go back to the traffic committee or would it be implemented and then taken to the?
Not, not sure, I think, that's what, I think, let them, let them look at it.
Can we get clarification on that soon, if we can please?
The traffic committee as it stands is an advisory committee, so if, if we can get endorsement from and support from the, the two voting members as well as ourselves, we can report back retrospectively.
All right. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it unanimous. CFD zero three, Liverpool Animal Shelter, Ross Morgrage, page one, two, two, five.
Yes.
We're still, this is the last one of addendum book five.
Addendum book five. Yes, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move a motion.
What's your motion, councillor?
That I thank council for the, for the report, although I am a little disappointed. If you could just give me a moment to find my notes on it.
Do you, do you, do you have the motion written up?
I do.
Is it a long motion?
You might have it.
Do you have it on, did you guys have it already? All right.
So, Mr Mayor, I do note the progress report on establishing a Liverpool council animal shelter at Rossmoor Grange and notes that council is running late on this project in accordance with the agreed timetable by the former CEO. And also notes that the ACO assured that he would continue to deliver all projects set in place by the former CEO. Perhaps a question to the CEO, did you ever receive the timetable for this project?
Thank you. Probably not in my capacity as director of operations and I haven't reviewed it what the former CEO had.
Projected.
Projected.
And had the timetable.
But I'll take it on notice and look back at the programme of work. And then I'll work with the acting director of operations to return some information and assure you that that programme is achievable.
Yes, well, we're already late with it because at this particular stage we were to have a shovel ready DA ready to be submitted. Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Goodman, seconder? Do we have a seconder? Do we have a seconder going once? Going twice? Councillor, councillor, councillor Green? Yep. Let's go for it.
You didn't want to do that councillor, I can tell that you didn't want to do it.
Fifty-two minutes left.
And perhaps that's the point that nobody was willing to second this motion. The point that I had to remind council that we were expecting a report in this particular council meeting makes me feel that the project is a little unloved, that it hasn't got the support of council. And, you know, I feel that we need to do a little bit extra. We need a report in council to come back to the October council meeting or council or staff can inform me of a date that they would be able to do that. And further to that, as I said, I was quite impressed with the funding operation, the new funding operation for the artwork that we dealt with earlier. And I would like a similar funding, dedicated funding. And I've said $2 million from general funds consecutively on financial years, exactly as was the other one, with additional funding towards project implementation and delivery costs. So that's the motion. Now, council has resolved to support that there is a Liverpool animal shelter. We receive reports that the number of animals that we need to deal with is going to increase, not go down. And I know that that's what the motion is, but I need to see that we are going to stay on top of this and actually progress the animal shelter toward delivery.
Can, I just, I know everybody wants to talk because if I can get to it very bluntly, you're talking about what's that, $2 million a year times six years, that's $12 million. That has a massive impact on our long-term financial plan. And I do not believe that we can consider this without having a report on the impact on our long-term financial plan.
What figures do you think you would be willing to accept, Mr Mayor?
Thankfully, council has amazing experts that work for us, subject matter experts, a whole team that I'm sure would love to bring out another spreadsheet and charts for us and demonstrate to us how this will have an effect on us. Okay, yeah. No? We can do it. Yeah. No, it's, yeah, you, we can't, we, we, we.
So, Mr Mayor, is it that?
Technically, we can put it up, but it's not prudent. And I wouldn't be voting anything without understanding the full financial impacts of it.
Okay, we'll change number five to council to report back on a possible support delivery of the Liverpool Animal Shelter.
Yeah, if you mind, if I can give you some words? Just report back on the funding source and impacts on the long-term financial plan, right? Deputy Mayor? Councillor Rhodes?
I'm not commenting on whether I would or not support the motion, but I want to ask whether or not it is legal or correct to have points two and points three because, you know, time, yeah, I'm not sure about the validity of those two points. I could spend a long time talking about it, but I'm happy just to question the validity of those two points.
I can produce the timetable if necessary.
I'll ask through the CEO and the mayor then.
The CEO?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Couple of things. The point three was, is a general undertaking that the that was made in a period where the former CEO was still employed. And it still stands today that we will continue all the projects set in place is a difficult term because there were projects undertaken during a period that the former CEO was in place. The second issue is it's not similar to the public arts discussion in that the total cost of project was $2 million over the same period, where this is $2 million assumed over a period of five to six years. The third thing is council has fallen into a number of project deficiencies by not doing a bill of quantities or a quantity or a QS to a contemporary QS to understand exactly how much these buildings cost within the programme due to escalations in construction industry. So they're all considerations that we would have in relation to number five. And I just might revert just to the director city futures to see if he's got anything else to add to my comments.
Thank you, acting CEO. And thank you for your comments, councillor. This report, I might go back to when you said the animal shelter was a bit of an orphan. Commercial property has taken up with partnership with the director that has enforcement, planning and enforcement, this project to move it forward. As you see from the report, and I'm not a planner, so I'm reluctant to talk about planning matters, but it's complex planning stuff that's occurred. There's been a refusal, then a gateway. There's studies required. We've started the studies. There's some funding for the studies. One of them is Aboriginal heritage. Those things have to be done, flood and fire, before we can move forward to your proposal, a planning proposal. Also, in this report, you'll note we've commissioned a quantity surveyor. We commissioned architect to do the designs. You see the designs here. This is the architect that did, I think he did, is it Blacktown? The architect? Windjikabri, okay. So he's experienced in these designs and it's modular and can be expanded. And there's two proposals in here. But nonetheless, we have to do quantity surveyors, as the acting CEO said. We've had some trouble already elsewhere where, you know, have done back of envelope figures and we've got caught. At the moment, we're talking, including land development, like roads and services into the land and the development of this, not much changed from $20 million. Now, that said, we've got a proposal in here that there's potential commercial development on that site that we might be able to use it as a funding mechanism. I can see Faruk being very happy to hear that. That means it might be able to be dealt with without going through that long-term financial plan problem that this acting CEO said. So I really, so the recommendation is receive a note of the progress and get another report with a fully detailed costing proposal for the new council to consider.
And just a question then through the CEO. When would those reports that you'll have to do? When would they be completed?
Can I just interject for a moment? Sorry, councillor Rhodes. We've just gone through six, seven months of preparing a budget with a $177 million capital works programme. That's when these discussions should have been had, should have been inserted into that. And I know your frustration that it hasn't and, but that's when really, that's a discussion. It is not good governance to go in here and after we've just adopted a budget and gone to the community and to make such a massive change and add on to this capital works programme. So, you know, if they're realistically, from what I'm hearing, is that, you know, you've got to progress to fund a DA at this point in time? Or how would you, how, I guess, is this now into the the machine and the project, the delivery?
Delivery management framework?
Yeah, is it like?
It isn't.
Yes, it is. I mean, we've got detailed design to the point where we can now have a QS that gives us an indication of the price to construct. So that's the step that we would naturally go through now if this was any other project. The design is of at such a stage where people can tell us with a high degree of certainty exactly how much certain different options to build would cost us.
And through the CEO, when would that financial report be available?
Typically, if we were to take this resolution and start it tomorrow, I'd expect that a QS to the level of design available would be three to six weeks away, where we would have a number that we can rely upon, that would be satisfy the DMF. Because the delivery management framework would produce gates where those numbers have to be compatible with project costs.
Sorry, councillor Hadeed?
Yeah, well, I'm Mr Mayor, so you're to my colleague councillor Rhodes. I'm quite happy to support your motion. Point one, two, three, four, delete number five, should be fine. So still you will get your reports, get everything, come back to you.
Councillor Hadeed, what's wrong with point five? It's just.
Well, it's, a point five is talking about like $2 million every year.
Can we remove that part? Just get a report back on the funding source and impact on the financial plan?
Already, Mr Mayor, already, already a point four, a report back to council is fully budgeted detail, shovel ready to be submitted DA, blah, blah, blah. So what for number five? You know what I mean? That's it, just leave it as is. Without number five, it will be fine.
Can I just, through the CEO, the relevant director, if there's a point five is needed or? Is it captured in point four?
Be undertaken, Mr Mayor, so that we get it in the 10-year plan and see what the impact will be.
Yep. Help with that. Councillor Rhodes, are you happy with the way the motion is?
We just have potential funding source.
Potential funding source. Lucky we're not all lawyers, eh?
I'm happy that for that to go up. I think it's very important for us to have a shovel ready DA ready to be submitted to support seeking funding, if possible, from other sources.
Do you want to give the animal shelter a name? I think you're entitled to, I would strongly support you naming this whatever you want to when it does get done.
Mr Mayor, I'll take you up on that. We will leave it and we'll try and think of a name for this animal shelter at a later date. Let's get it working and get it moving.
Right to the administrator, letting them know.
That'll be my first request.
Mr Mayor, I'm still uncomfortable with points two and points three and I don't know that I can support the motion with those points in it.
Councillor Rhodes, would you mind removing those, please?
Can we change it? Notes that okay.
I think basically is if you remove two or three, the motion's probably going to go through and we can move on to one of the other 10, 15 items that we have on the agenda. 15?
All right. Remove two and three in the interest of the Liverpool Animal Shelter being delivered.
Well, I think if this motion gets passed, it shows that this council is committed to doing this. All right? All right, wonderful. Okay. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare it unanimous.
I didn't see his hand go up, Mr Mayor, but I'll take your.
I thought he was nodding, wasn't he nodding? I thought he nodded with enthusiasm, a yes. Division, all those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. Ah, we needed a stretch.
Mr Mayor, I have an urgency motion.
Yeah, yes. What's your urgency motion, councillor?
My urgency motion relates to, would you like me to read it out or, yeah, okay.
I need to know what it's about first and why it's urgent.
It relates to covering the legal costs of staff who have been mentioned publicly in the interim report. I'm happy to go into it further and it's urgent because it's urgent to get this cover for people who have unfairly been publicly named as our staff members.
So. So from my understanding, councillor McNaul, we have already, as of, when we were here on Monday, the staff already covered by internal insurances for appearing on, at the public inquiry, whatever it is, that's part of council's insurance policy. What are you recommending here that is different?
Mr Mayor, thank you. And that's great. And I'm happy that they're covered for an opportunity to clear their name, but that's not enough because these people have been defamed in the report potentially. Potentially staff have been defamed by being mentioned by name. And I would like council to would you like me?
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, just that there's a, the named persons therein would have a pecuniary conflict of interest in the outcome of the resolution.
Just before. So can I just say, ask?
If we can hold this for a moment, because this is going to go to be, I just want to get a sense of the temperature of councillors. I'm just mindful that we are 36 minutes less and it doesn't seem that we will thoroughly go through all these items. And I don't want to rush for the sake of rushing because we want the priorities in form decision-making. Can I just, is everyone happy if we, once we get to seven o'clock and the meeting stops, to return back here tomorrow, 5, 5.30 to continue with the agenda?
Yes.
Councillor McNaul, I think can't make it during the day tomorrow. There's no provisions. There's no provisions to do that. We have a civic function in this chamber on Friday. There'll be a very nice looking room in that case. All right, let's. Huh? Let's, let's see how we go. So, all right. Councillor McNaul, the way the way forward, I believe that if it's, if, can I ask staff that, yeah, the, I think the intent is, if I can summarise for the purposes of time, that staff in my opinion, deputy mayor's opinion, have been defamed. It is not fair what's happened to them. And the best way to remedy that is not waiting for a public inquiry in however long that takes, whatever it is, but is to go out there on the, to do a forward facing for offensive rather than defensive action for defamation against that. against that, which there would be a potentially pecuniary, pecuniary, pecuniary interest. If we're doing that, do staff want to say, and who will discuss that, or uh? Uh, you guys want to go? Okay.
For the record, so
Yeah.
Um, I'm declaring interest, I'm in the report, uh, and because it's about legal reimbursement, uh, pecuniary and significant interest, and I'll leave the chamber for the debate.
Uh, noted as um, our director of city futures, I'm also including the reports I will leave.
I'd like to declare a financial pecuniary interest and I'll be leaving.
And Jason Breton, financial pecuniary interest and I'll leave, and alas the director, community experience and business performance to take my chair in the interim.
Uh, Bery Busani, I declare the same. Conflict of interest.
You can fill out your forms whilst you're out there, everyone. So, if we say that
I have, uh,
You have the wording or?
I do have the wording, actually.
Oh, wonderful, okay.
So it would be something to, is something like, cover the legal costs of staff, that council, cover the legal costs of staff mentioned in the interim report for advice, comma, representation, comma, commencement of legal proceedings or to defend proceedings, including but not limited to defamation proceedings. Now, I did have uh, appearance and involvement in any public inquiry, but I believe that we don't need that. And reply to the interim report. And I would like to, as is for uh, councillors, can I mention the, I don't want to, i- is it a publicly known figure that I can mention on the, without being?
I would uh,
I would say to the same level as councillors are covered.
Look, the, the, um, the interesting thing about this, what I see is that first and foremost, staff want their names cleared. Right? And having been involved in a couple of defamation cases myself and one currently going at the moment, you know, you, you would issue, and I'm happy to, please, if I can have, if I can have a go, would you, um, prefer to jump in? You know, you'd issue a concerns notice, seeking an apology, right, and removal of any information, documentation, so on and so forth. If, if it's successful in doing that, fantastic, that's not expensive, that's a, writing a letter, bit of, you know, a bit of advice with it and sending it off. And the government can respond, yeah, sorry, we're sorry, we shouldn't have done that, right? And the matter's over and done with, not expensive, done. The thing is then if we decide then to go into, they want to go to actual commence proceedings, then that becomes a lot of challenges with that, it becomes a way more costly thing. Um, you know, substantial harm has to be proven, but what I'm getting at is if, if that happens successfully, there would be damages probably potentially awarded a financial amount, and the question is who then gets that money? So, oh now, I'm done now, I'll pass over to the, through the C, acting CEO, through the general counsel.
So, ju- just to say in relation to the, the proposed motion, you, you cannot know how much you would be committing to in legal costs if you, if you agreed to that motion, because if, if I went to a firm and said, please represent me in a defamation claim the council's paying, that, 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 that would be a license to print money, and that, that would be quite a dangerous situation. I, I think if, if you were going to cap it, you couldn't cap it by reference to what councillors would get, because councillors can't get um, reimbursed for this kind of, um, if I call it, uh, not defensive, but um, going after somebody action, that, that's not available under the civic expenses policy. So, you would have to determine a limit, and that limit may or may not be sufficient for the purpose. So, so it, it could end up being a contribution and not, not, um, you know, not full, full reimbursement. I, I recommend that if you do go down this road and, and fix a limit, that you identify a budget from which this can come. Um, uh, that there might be an attraction to the current legal services budget, it would not cover this. Um, so that there would need to be a budget identified. I, I, I don't know how many individual staff are affected, it's, it's something like a dozen or so. Um, so whatever number you fix, you would have to multiply it by, by that number. Um, and of, of course, you'd have to be satisfied that y- use of public money for um, private actions would, would be appropriate.
So, so effectively, yeah, put a number on it. And then the question about appropriateness, that's for us to decide. I, I have my views on that and happy to share them, but.
Based on the discussion of numbers and the, the fact that that may um jeopardize further, I, I'm wondering if I'm asking whether we should move this into a closed session to discuss specifics or not?
I don't, the, the accusations are in public. They're there. Generally, it's, you know, it's more about, well, yeah. You, if they're gonna go for it, they're gonna go for it. It's real, we, we don't know the merits, there should be a.
I, I'm more talking about the funding limit that we put on it, whether I, whether or not.
Oh, that amount?
Yes. Whether I should move into closed session, we should close the meeting so that I can talk about that, so that, that's not um, you know, that, that, you know.
Hmm.
I think I'd, I'd like to, I would be more comfortable doing that.
If you can just find the section you'd. Councillor Paul? Mike?
My point of view on this is, I think we're doing the wrong thing. We're all covered, all of us, staff, including councillors, and if you're talking about naming people, councillors are named as well, so is the mayor, so what difference is there? So, yeah, I, I would suggest, and I won't be supporting this, I would suggest that you simply wait until the uh, the, the investigation takes place, and you will then be entitled to legal counsel, and I would suggest that you do that. Anything else, if you're now talking about allocating funding, Mr Mayor, you know, you've copped a lot of criticism for your thing and that, and that, that isn't deserved, I don't believe. And this is going to happen to us as well. I do not want to support something like this because it's going to imply that you need defence to, to uh, fight this. I think you just take the natural course, don't do anything about it, and you will be better off. The publicity you're going to generate by doing this is going to be negative, not positive. And look, that, that's just the way it is. From my humble point of view, I would not support this. I would take whatever inquiry comes up, and in fact, if there is an inquiry, I expect them to subpoena me so that I can tell the truth and have some, uh, when I say I'm gonna tell the truth anyway, but the point is, I then have some legal backing.
Councillor Hadeed?
Well, I believe we have a policy to cover the staff, isn't it?
No.
So the staff?
We had a presentation the other day during the, uh, the governance committee about this issue. So acting CEO now, don't we have a policy to cover the staff?
No.
Through the mayor?
Through the mayor, um, we have a policy that covers defence in an inquiry.
Sorry.
Ah, there you go. Uh, through the mayor, we have, we have uh, insurance cover for defence in a public inquiry, but not for this situation. So we can, we have a policy that covers defence as part of a public inquiry, but not in this instance for a defamation case.
Sorry, thank you. Through, through the chair and I'll turn your microphones on, please.
I'm not, I'm not talking about defamation case. So this is the question, so they are covered to defend themselves?
Uh, through the mayor, yes, they, they will be covered. Anyone who is part of the public inquiry will be represented.
Okay, so this is the first. Secondly, secondly, was gonna to ask. If, for instance.
Councillor Hadeed, the general counsel would like to make comment, do you mind if he goes?
Sorry, councillor, I think it's relevant to the point you're making, if this is okay. Um, yes, we have a policy of insurance, it's management liability policy. Um, it does cover investigations, responding to those. Um, what we do need to be careful about, um, is that any resolution to for council to pay money to staff for legal expenses doesn't result in the insurer denying cover under the existing policy for investigations. That it does not. Be, now, I don't know, I mean, insurers are not, sorry, I need to be careful how I frame this. Insurers will protect their position under the policy, and it, we ju, I, I just don't know what stance they'll take if we are handing out money to staff on whether they also will honour their um, obligations under the policy. So, so it's just a caution. Uh, I don't know the answer to that.
So we could maybe make it subject to, or would we, would we be able to get a different, to the chair, to the CEO, would we be able to get a definitive answer from our, their insurers?
We can seek an answer, um, that is something we could seek relatively quickly, um, but sorry, we can, we can ask quickly, whether, whether they respond quickly is another matter, will be in their hands.
Okay, so now, what I believe, as long as, Mr Mayor, they are covered right now, and just wait for the outcome of the investigation. If our staff are cleared from any wrongdoing, so then I'm quite happy to support them to take, okay, case against the, the government and to clear their name and ask for information. I, I have no issues with that, so it's two steps you have to follow now. This is why.
Sorry, if I, if I can, if I can just jump in, the challenge with that is that you need to, if you're going to uh, sue for defamation, that you have to, you have to issue a concerns notice within 12 months of the, of when the defamation actually happened. So, you know, this may not be resolved in the next 12 months.
He can put a, you can pass a, a resolution now, it says, it says, depends on the outcome of the investigation.
Please, let, let, let me be very blunt. You have s- hardworking staff members, award-winning sta, not, not politicians, right? I, right, I've, you know, we, we, we have to, yeah, yeah, exactly, definitely not that, right? Right, so I'm happy to, I, I, I'm happy to cop all the criticism, you know, in, as I have been, and I will continue to take it, and that's what I signed up for. However, the staff mentioned in that report do not, and have not signed up for that. There has been a significant, significant breach of natural justice to staff members. They do not deserve that. Currently, many of the staff mentioned within that report are on leave because of what that has caused. Now, they are now in a situation where when you go to Google, they exist and are viewed in a very negative light through no fault of their own, through zero fault of their own. They don't deserve to have that cloud hanging over their head for six months, 12 months, 18 months. It is unfair. This is causing significant mental distress and anguish to them. We have one thing that we can do. Yes, they're covered for defensive, yes, they're covered in the inquiry, but the only way they can clear their name is through a proactive defamation proceedings. That if we as an organisation, if we as an organisation say, you know what, we stand by our staff, right? That flips it on them, because they know this organisation has their back. That's what should happen, right?
Can we, can we fix this?
I totally agree with you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with you, Mr Mayor. Therefore, I said, depends on the outcome, depends on the outcome. If our staff are cleared from anything's wrongdoing, then, put it in the resolution, then the council should fund, raise, to clear their name.
Here's, here's the beautiful thing, when you look at the staff that are mentioned in there, they're gonna be, they are cleared within five minutes. Doesn't have to wait a year or six months. Had they had been questioned, had an investigator said to them, hey, staff member X, you have been accused of this, such and such. What is your response to that? Their response will, will actually know, let me present to you the fa, the, my side. All right, the investigator said, do you have any, do you have any proof? Oh, they say, here you go, here is the piece of paper that says I declare this, or here, no, I have no family members who work here, right? The basic fundamentals, and we're gonna see this very soon in court, right, in those reports, uh, is flawed. They do not deserve to be put in a position where they have to wait such a long time to be afforded natural justice. They don't deserve that. Why should they wait six months for? We know it, we have the facts. This organisation has the facts relating to every staff member. All they had to do is go to the computer and pull up the data, but the investigator's chosen not to do that. Why should they suffer? I'll cop it. I don't want defamation proceedings, I will fund my own defamation proceedings, don't you worry about that. Microphone.
Even, even all of us, we know the fact, they've done nothing wrong. But still, still, you have to wait for the, a judge decision to be able to go and clear their name.
Why, why would you?
Have you seen your name, it is not, I would come of the case.
Pardon? Because the staff know that, the staff know, it's easy to generate. It's easy to go out there and say, one staff member's accused of hiring her family member. Yeah, she has a family member who works here, but guess when she started? The family member started before the manager did. So how does that work? All that is, we go to HR, pull up the record, done.
I, I understand that, I understand that.
Look.
Mr Mayor, can I speak for my passion? If anyone doesn't mind, um, I'm, I'm happy if ca, if staff are covered, I'm relatively, I'm, I'm not happy about any of it, but if staff are covered for the proceedings of a public inquiry, then let's make this about defamation proceedings, that's fine. Take everything else out of it, that's fine. I'd also like to make a change that says, staff named by, uh, sorry, what does it say? Of staff mentioned in the report by name or job or position, by name or position? Yep, job position, yeah, that's fine. Um, for defamation proceedings. And I think that it is only fair of people sitting here to consider what staff have been put through. I'm happy to close the meeting. I'm happy to close the meeting under text, section 10A to part C to discuss the specifics of finance so that it's not prejudiced. If, if anyone would like to, I'm happy to move that.
Is there a second, is there a second, councillor Goodman? I thought you seconded it before, so my apologies, but yep. All right, we have a motion that we move into closed session, because the under section that was referred to by the deputy mayor, um, 10A2C of Law Government Act. Back in. What's wrong, what's wrong with the metal? Can you put your microphone on, please? I can't hear.
I've received a message saying, I'm trying to watch the meeting, but every time the camera hits the mayor, there is a shining blink coming straight back.
Councillors, I'd like to move, hopefully, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we um, um, we're gonna, we're gonna come, we're gonna have to adjourn the meeting to come back tomorrow. But before we do that, I'd like to move conf 16, page 1307, which is in confidential addendum six.
Give me the second, Mr Mayor.
Second deputy mayor. All right, if, I didn't realise it was gonna be people had questions, let's deal with that one tomorrow. I'll take that back. All right, I didn't realise it was going to be people had questions, let's deal with that one tomorrow. I'll take that back. All right, no problems.
So we're reconvening tomorrow at 5pm?
Yeah, I think everyone is pretty exhausted, so we're up to, yes, everyone, I'll declare the meeting adjourned to 5pm tomorrow for the meeting to continue, the same building, same location.
Thank you.
Therefore, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.